Calling this city council meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025. Time on deck is 5:30. The Honorable Mayor Don Hardy wanted me to address the council tonight with a message. Don Hardy extends his regrets for not being able to be at this evening's city council meeting. The mayor has been chosen to serve as a member of the 33rd cohort of leadership in North Carolina, one of the state's most distinguished leadership development programs. The mayor also says this program that he's attending has been accepted for will benefit the city of Kinston in many ways. So he just wanted to send his regrets for not being here on this evening. Also, police chief, we have a full house tonight. If we have any interruptions, just please remove anybody that's not conducting themselves in the proper manner. With that said, we'll have our prayer by Pastor Reginald Bradshaw, St. Augustine AME Zion Church.
Let us pray. Gracious and eternal God, we come this evening, thankful for your goodness towards us and for the opportunity to serve our community. We thank you for our city, its people, every neighborhood, and all those who work each day to make it a better place to live. Grant to our mayor, our mayor pro tem, council members, and all who gather here to make decisions that affect the lives of the citizens. Help them to lead with integrity, fairness, and compassion. Let every discussion be guided by understanding and every decision be shaped by a desire for justice, unity, and the common good. Bless we, the citizens, those who speak, those who serve, and those who quietly contribute to the strength of our community. Remind us that leadership is not about power but about purpose, not about position but about people. May peace, respect, and cooperation fill this room tonight, and may all that is said and done here tonight honor you and the spirit that binds our community together. In the Lord's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
Councilmember Suggs.
Here.
Councilmember Seiforth.
Here.
And you, Mayor Pro Tem Hardy.
Present. All present and all accounted for. Citizen comments. Citizens must sign in before the start of the meeting if they wish to address the council. Citizens should state their name and address before beginning their comments and may speak up to a maximum of three minutes. Citizen speaking. Seeking assistance or asking questions will be contacted by the governing body or by appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk, will there be any?
Yes, sir. Levon Grady.
To the podium, please.
Levon Grady, 503 Summit Avenue, Kinston. I'm here tonight to ask for the public help. If anyone knows Pastor Walter Cannon, Beautiful Valley Free Will Baptist Church Dover, please ask him to check the city and state codes because a city van cannot be stored in a residential district. The van hasn't moved in over six months or more, meaning it is stored. Ask for references St. John's Free Will Baptist Church, Greater Mount Zion, and Temple of Deliverance. They all have church vans parked and stored in their church parking lot. Also, it is a safety hazard. You cannot see around the van, under the van, or over the van. It is extremely dangerous, especially at night, because you can't see on the other side. If the van is being hidden in plain sight from the repo man or if it is not insured, whatever the case may be, please ask him to move the church van to the side of the house or the backyard. It is a safety hazard being stored in the front yard. Questions. Yes, I have tried calling the church. The mailbox is full. I have asked families and friends that know Beautiful Valley Free Will Baptist Church, but they don't know the pastor. The owner lives out of state, and I would like to ask the city clerk, Ms. Thompson, if she would schedule a meeting with me, with the city council members, or a member without, only for about 15 or 20 minutes. If they decline, I'd like to schedule a meeting with the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Madam Clerk, will there be another?
Yes, sir. Quala Blackwell.
Ms. Blackwell, if you go to the podium, please.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
I stand before y'all tonight as a voice for many residents who feel ignored and dismissed. We have asked serious questions about the integrity and accountability of our city leadership, and there's still been no answers. The first question I asked, did you, Ms. Rhonda Bart, Chief Goyette, and Officer Christian Heath commit an insurance fraud against us by having your personal car wrecked ended by a patrol car, and we replaced them, causing taxpayers money? The second question I asked these guys, how many city vehicles have Officer Heath crashed in a matter of months resulting in the taxpayers constantly replacing them or repairing them? The third question I asked was, why is he even still on the force? I received his personnel file. He had seven suspensions and a promotion behind every suspension. My next question is, why was Officer Stringer allowed to commit a felony? Y'all just charged me for two for something I didn't do. He wrecked the police car, went home, lied, made a false police report, was able to come back to work, and then get a DWI and still resign. Then my next question is, why was Quante fired? He had a clean personnel file, first offense. My next question is, these are questions we've been asking and no answers to. My next question is, was Brian Lucas allowed to resign for stealing, and now he's back bidding and winning the contracts for the city? My next question is, why aren't there policies in place about our money when y'all travel? Mayor spent $67,000 of our money with no itemized receipts. It's time to change that policy. And so tonight, I'm calling to ask you guys for immediate action to launch an independent audit, an independent public audit into these incidents that I just told you about, to test these people's integrity for real. There's very little behind these smiles, and it's your job to hold them responsible for the things that they have done and put your names on it because their names aren't on these paperworks. The city council, only the six city council member names are on these paperworks that show that. It's like y'all agreeing to a suspension and a promotion at the same time. But before I run out of time, let me address my mayor that ain't never here. It was real unacceptable for a leader to release false information put on the web by Chief Goyette about me, very unprofessional, which only denotes that these guys have no business being in position to rep all. I don't care what they feel about me. I'm still a citizen, a resident, a human, and I deserve the same thing everybody else gets, even if you don't like me. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will there be another?
Henda Moore.
Ms. Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. My name is Henda, and I reside at 507 East Bright Street in Kinston. On the 4th of October, Apostle Nancy held a march, and I participated in the march that started in close proximity of Bright and Michael Wayne Street. Traveling down Bright Street, the marchers had to leave the sidewalks because of debris and thick trash that had literally covered the walkway near Southeast School. We continued to travel up Bright Street. There's a church and two houses that has been abandoned, and our only option is to bulldoze because of the conditions of the dwelling. Turn left on Ackin. There's a lot that sits on the left. It's in pretty bad condition. Go down further, there are two houses that has sustained fire damage. Go up cowl, there are houses neglected and abandoned on the corner and those across the street as well. Continue traveling up Ackin. There's a house on Gordon, Gordon that's dilapidated, needs some help. And the houses that are beside it, they need bulldozed down. Keep traveling. On the left side, there is a house that needs bulld, at the intersection of Hicks and Ackin that needs bulldozing. Keep traveling. There's a two-story house on the corner of Maker that has been neglected and abandoned. There's brick homes diagonal from that property that has been neglected and abandoned. On the corner of Tyree Road, there's a dilapidated building, and at that four-way stop behind that is a house, and that building has been neglected. Keep traveling. Private properties belonging to someone or maybe even the city. Lots of money, lots of work, but needs to be done. Turn right on East Washington. I'm not sure who owns that property, but I will suggest that a notice be sent to the owner to clear that property of face fines. There's a huge limb or tree that has not been removed, and that huge limb or tree has literally turned brown. There are some apartments on that property. Again, I'm not sure who owns that property, but whoever owns that property, the people in the community needs justice. You take every dime, right down from the dollar to the penny, that you blood sucked out of those tenants, and you get a list of companies that demolished, and you have that dilapidated building knocked to the ground. To the tenants that reside in that dilapidated building, please find somewhere else to live. I guarantee you that he will have that building bulldozed down. The owner knows the deal. Now shoot your best shot with the city, with revenues and high taxes. I yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Madam Clerk, will there be another?
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Jones at 2209 Riley Road. I'm here again because our property taxes are out of control. Homeowners like me are struggling, and families must choose between food, medicine, paying utility bills, or covering these property taxes. This isn't fair or sustainable. You knew in 2025 reevaluations would raise home values. Lenore County does this every eight years. You also set a city tax rate of 73 cents per $100 value instead of the fair revenue-neutral rate of 60 cents. With the county's 67.5 cent rate, we now pay about $1.40 for each $100 of property value. That's too much. Our budget jumped by 12 million. Now it's 133 million. Other cities like Rocky Mount are cutting 30 million from their budget to fix overspending. Why can't we do the same? City reports are confusing, and it looks like most of the money is being taken from homeowners. Representative Humphrey rightly said raising taxes should always be the last resort. Commissioner King warned high taxes drive people away. Remember, 58% of the people in Kinston rent, and higher taxes also mean higher rents for them. We need real solutions. Cut the city tax to 60 cents. State law says you can amend the budget before January 1st. Do it. Order a forensic audit. Order a forensic audit. Regular audits miss waste or fraud. We need to know where our money's going. Our town is hurting. Many businesses are empty. More neighbors are thinking of leaving. The city's own chart says citizens come first, but right now, it feels like we're last. I'm heartbroken. Kinston's future depends on what you do now. Please slash the tax rate, run a forensic audit, and put our people first. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, will there be another?
Good evening, everybody. That was my wife. My name is Robert Jones. I reside at 2209 Riley Road. Just did old to what she said about property taxes and all that good stuff. That's one of the main reasons I'm here. We moved here from Indianapolis, Indiana, March 2024. Found a beautiful house. We looked high and low and all this good stuff. Moved here, and one of the things that everybody should do, if I can give anybody any advice, is the first thing you do is not only look at the price of the house, but you do, you do, you look at your property taxes and all that good stuff. If I knew the property taxes were going to be where they were, our taxes went up over 110%. That's a lot of money added up, and if it's true that it's going to be that way for the next eight years, hell, I can buy a new house. So I guess my main reason that I'm here is to ask you guys to consider, and I see something in the budget, but I'm not 100, I mean, the agenda, I'm not 100% sure that's what you're looking at, but look at reforecasting this 2025 budget and see what you can cut out of it and all that good stuff. It's a bad look for the mayor or whoever put this together. You take, raise property taxes, but then you provide a 5% COLA for all full-time employees. You also are taking yourself off the 5% and just giving yourself a $300 per month raise. And when you look at it, I'll take an average employee rated like $20 an hour. That's $1. So $20 plus the COLA is $21. So that person, on average, is going to make a little bit over $2,080 a year in addition to their performance review, where they're going to get the annual raise regardless. The board takes 3,300. That's $3,600 a year. So it's a bad look when you do stuff like that and then you take money away from property owners and renters and the people from the city of Kinston. So just asking that you reconsider and look at redoing the budget before the end of the year. If you let us know, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Ms. Jones. Madam Clerk, will there be another?
Good evening. My name is Gwendolyn Woods, and I stay 307 West Blunt Street. So today, I know the last time we came, I talked about the taxes, and, Lord, help me. So I went down there today, and I had a good conversation with the lady, and this is how she explained it to me. Everybody that pays their taxes before January the 5th is due on the 1st. She give you, they give you till the 5th. On January the 6th, it's a penalty. You will have to pay 2.5% added on to it. She said February the 1st, it goes up to 7.5% added on to it. And I just stood there and looked. She said each month, there's a higher percent. I'm not understanding how. So when you go down there, if you got family, friends, or know somebody that's elderly or anybody, and you got to go down there and try to pay those taxes, they need to understand. And if they don't, or an elderly person or whoever, do not understand, somebody needs to go and speak on their behalf because to pay for me, they said my house was valued, just mind you, two years ago, it was only worth $13,000. When I talked to the woman, she said last year it came up to $25,000. I didn't know that. But this year, it is worth $126,570.31. My taxes is $1,778.85. I don't understand how. I stay 307 West Blunt. 309, 311 has been abandoned for years. Right now, we are fighting to keep drug addicts, homeless, drug dealers. I mean, right there, it is horrible because they kicking in the doors, busting out the windows. I have went down there to get their name to see that they want to sell the property. No, but they ain't trying to fix the property. They ain't doing nothing to that area, and I'm just not understanding how. It does not make sense. It's just not adding up. So when y'all know somebody that do not understand, please inform them that come January the 1st, if they do not pay it on the 6th, there's a 2.5%. On February the 1st is 7.5. I had to take a break after that because she said each month, it's going to go higher until they pay their taxes.
Madam Clerk, will there be another, please?
Stephen West. Okay. Are you going to speak with the Glen Raven Project? Is this what this is, you're passing altogether?
That's my interest.
Okay. Okay. All right. So you don't want to be on the public hearing? Okay. All right. Antoinette Woolley. Is this Travel or Travail?
Travel.
Travel Noel.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good e- My name is Travel Noel. I live at 1201 Virginia Avenue in Kinston. My concern today is another property that I have is 507 East Washington Avenue. Across the street from 507, my daughter lives there, across the street is 501, 500 and 501. I think that's how it is. The guys sit back there. I have no problem with them sitting by, cooking, playing horseshoe, having fun. Sometime they shoot, sometime they make a lot of noise. But my concern is that the area needs to be cleared out. There's trees, there's bushes. You can't see there, see through there. My daughter work at the hospital. She get off work at 7 o'clock in the evening. By the time she gets home, it's 7:30. She pick up her dog, she go home. I like to see it cleared up so that she can see when she park her car. She doesn't park her car on the street because people are going through there like they're on the New Jersey Turnpike. So she parks her car close to the steps. But I just, my biggest concern is to clean it up. Cut that down. I go over there, I pick up bottles, cans. The guys is fine. I don't know what they're doing in there, but I would like to see it cleaned up a little bit. So now, next door to 507, my house, it's 509. The person's house caught fire last year. He hasn't done anything. I know who it is. I found out the name and everything, but the big, another big problem that we're having there is rats. I go to Big Blue, I buy Tomcat. I put in the hose. We clean up around the house. My daughter's very good because I told her, no matter where you live, you have to keep it clean. We weren't brought up like that. However, I would like some assistance. Rat poison is very expensive, but I have to do something because I don't want them in the house. The property tax on that house, when I first started, was $94 a year. It went up this year $451.73. I paid it. I paid it because it's my duty to do that. But I just, I talked to Mr. Foss, I think Code Enforcement. He said he was going to go by and check out where I was talking about need to be cleared. I feel that when you make an appointment, you call someone and you complain about something. If they go out and ride by, put a sticker or something on, let you know that they've been by there. I called him today. It went to voicemail. I'm not blaming him, but I do respect someone who respects me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll have somebody take a look at that for you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will there be another?
Brandon Corey, you are here for the?
I'm here to speak on a motion for the-
Okay. All right. It'll be coming up, and they'll call you. That's all, sir.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, I have one that was sent in that I need to read.
Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
It's from Stephen Marlowe, 1501 St. James Place. Dear counsel, since this has recently been brought to everyone's attention of the new property reevaluations, is it possible to extend the non-interest payment deadline another month or two? If people budget for bills, as our family does, you budget to set aside money to cover monthly, quarterly, six-month, or yearly billings. Since this new property tax bill has been raised so high, individuals or families will not have enough time to update a budget in such a short period to cover the outrageous jump in property taxes that everyone receives. Most citizens receive the property tax at least double or more than last year. I think it would be fair to allow a couple more months of no interest payment for this bill to allow the city of Kinston citizens more time to set aside money for this new evaluation. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Stephen N. Marlowe.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving right along, adoption of the agenda. If council member wishes to revise the agenda, the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before adoption of the agenda. Are there any?
We had a closed session for personnel.
Madam Clerk, that record show that we're going to go in closed session for personnel. What is that? A-6. Will there be any others?
No, sir.
All right. Well, I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Motion was made.
Second.
And second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on September 16th, 2025. Madam Clerk.
I don't have anything to add, sir.
Very well. I entertain the motion.
Motion.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Presentations and recognitions, 2024 Reliable Public Power Provider RP3 Award. Mr. Stephen Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm going to ask Mr. Andy Fussco to stand up here along with our, some of our members, our electric staff who are here today. Come on forward, guys. Don't be shy. Every year, as a public power provider, we compete with all of the public power providers. across the country for public power awards. Uh, so tonight, we are very blessed to have Andy Fusco here from Electric Cities to share the results of the twenty twenty-four awards and how Kinston did in the five categories that we were eligible for.
Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure and honor to be here tonight. Um, I'm Andy Fusco again, Electric Cities of North Carolina, and, and, and City of Kinston is one of our members. So I'm, I'm very thankful to be here. Uh, this week is Public Power Week, and Public Power Week is a national recognition for communities who own and operate their own electric systems, which Kinston is one of them. There are over two thousand of those, uh, communities across the country and including in some U.S. territories. So, um, Public Power Week is here, you know, is, exists because we want folks to understand the benefits of owning and operating an electric system. It is true that, um, owning an electric system brings true value to your community through, um, higher reliability, lower rates, and, and better service, all of which Kinston provides. So, um, you know, it's, it's great to be able to issue these awards during Public Power Week. So just a couple other announcements here. Uh, as you're probably aware, uh, Kinston is a member of North Carolina Eastern Municipal Power Agency. And, uh, the good news there is this past July, uh, Eastern Agency paid the last payment on its forty-year debt. So, um, that is a huge milestone. Your, your power agency is debt-free. And, um, definitely reflected in your rates. So it's something you should be proud of. And, um, back in July, a number of, um, uh, folks from our communities joined us in a celebratory lunch, and I'm sure some folks from Kinston were there as well. So I did want to recognize you on that. And also, one other recognition before I get to the awards. Almost a year ago today, this week, uh, your, uh, electric crews were in western North Carolina, providing assistance to public power communities out there who got hit hard from the storm. So I did want to recognize them and, and your hard work. I know those, uh, communities out there appreciate the effort and, and it is a very good thing that we can help each other out because you never know, the next hurricane might hit this side of the state. Fingers crossed that this year's looking pretty good. So on to the awards. Um, a- as Steve said, uh, we have five awards, and, and the awards are tied to what we call our strategic priorities. Back in twenty twenty-two, our Board of Directors, um, along with a number of our communities, um, put in place our, our strategic plan for public power here in, in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia. And we have, uh, five of those strategic priorities, one award in each one. I'll, I'll kind of mention the five areas. Uh, first off, future, future focus, which involves, you know, looking into the future, having a future-focused mindset, strengthening public power through advocacy and, and public awareness, providing superior power in the services you do, and delivering, uh, power to your customers. Customer-centered innovation, bringing new services and, and ways to provide those services to your customer. And finally, people, your employees, perhaps your greatest asset. So I'll go through and, and just kind of, uh, read, you know, why you won each one of these five. I will say you ran a table. Not everybody gets five awards. You get selected. I'm one of the scores, and I got to say, I'm a tough scorer. So, um, it is definitely, um, unusual to get all five. So first off, on future focus, uh, one thing y'all did was a competitive analysis with surrounding utilities, and you demonstrated that you have the lowest rates in the area. And not only that, but you communicated it to your customers. Under strengthening public power, uh, you recently launched the load management program. And through that, an aspect of that program was, was effectively communicating that to your customers, ensuring their questions were answered, and they understood what they are getting with that program. Providing superior, uh, power is the program itself because load management helps reduce, um, usage during the most expensive times of the day. It does cost different to, to consume power different times of the day, and your load management program helped do that to provide value to the city and also your customers. Under customer-centered innovation, the highlight there is, is Kinston launched Intelehome, which is a portal through its smart meter system, and that provides a lot of information and additional services to your customers. And then finally, um, under people, for your employees, you engage with local, uh, high schools, and you also engage with the Lenora County Community College System to, um, introduce the high school students to the trade of line work. And I think y'all even, um, hired a, an intern through that. So five great initiatives, and I just want to congratulate you on that. And, and with that, I do want to present you all with this wonderful plaque.
So I, I'll get to hold the plaque. I didn't do the work. The work was done by the staff that we have in our electric group. We've got twenty-two dedicated employees in electric. They work twenty-four seven, whatever the calls are, whatever happens, they respond. Um, all those things that we talked about for public power that Andy mentioned that are benefits of being a local provider is that you are being served by your neighbors. Uh, these folks live and work in Kinston, Lenora County, neighboring towns. Uh, they're here to respond. They respond faster than Duke responds. They respond faster than Tri-County respond. We get the lights on quicker. We do have the lowest rates in Lenora County of any provider at this point. Uh, so, and obviously, tonight, we're trying to take steps to make that even better. Uh, but we take it very seriously that we want to provide superior service at affordable costs and try to provide the best quality that we can to all of our customers. So again, the work has been done by the people that are behind me in electric, also customer service and other groups that help people with their bills. Uh, and I'm very proud of the group that we have and what they do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, and your crew. And thank you, sir, for coming down to, uh, present us with that award. With that said, we're going to come up front and take a picture. We'll give it to you.
I didn't ask my electric guys if they want to speak. I think I already know the answer to that.
All right, thank you again, gentlemen. Item number two on presentations, Public Power Week and Customer Service Week. Stephen Miller.
Thank you again. This time, the electric guys aren't, you're not allowed to sit down yet. Now, I wanted to get our customer service staff to stand up and join us as well. Uh, this week is, is two weeks of recognition. Uh, Public Power Week extends this week from October fifth to October eleventh. Uh, Customer Service Appreciation Week is October sixth to October tenth. So we're celebrating both those items this week. Um, I'll talk about customer service first. Uh, we have a very dedicated staff that helps people with their bills and with their utilities. Um, it's part of all of our jobs because our ultimate job for all of us is providing service to the citizens. Uh, so for the public services group, uh, we have fourteen staff that are in our business office. Uh, we have five staff down here at City Hall. If people want to walk in and sit down and talk with somebody, set up an account, whatever information they need, work on payment arrangements, the staff down here will be glad to do that in person. They also help man a twenty-four seven customer service line, nine three nine three two eight two. Most people are familiar with that. Uh, the staff down at our public service complex, they handle the phones as well. They also deal with dispatching crews and providing response so we can get back out if customers call in with any type of complaint across the city, whether it's electric, potholes, garbage, whatever issues they may have. Uh, they will dispatch the proper people, get the hold of them, and get a response out there to try to take care of it. So I encourage anybody, people have, people try to call me if they have an issue. That's fine, but what I usually do is call customer service and get them to dispatch the proper folks. So if you want the most expedient service, call nine three nine three two eight two, and that's what these people take care of. In addition to that, we have staff that's involved in billing. We have staff that's involved in our public outreach and posts, uh, doing different types of events like we did today at the City Services Fair, and also providing reports that we have to do for all of the agencies, especially along, uh, the electric power needs. Um, so we're very proud of these folks and all the things they do. Uh, and so I'm very glad to have them here tonight, um, taking time out after a busy day to continue to be here and receive this recognition from us. So for the customer service folks, if we could get a round of applause, I would appreciate that. All right, and like I said, it's also Public Power Week. We already talked about electric. Andy talked about a lot of the things that, that go into being a public power provider. Uh, public power is simply a local government-owned system. And that's, that's what we are. We don't make power, we buy power, but we also maintain four hundred miles of distribution system. We have ten different substations and connection points to, to get that power to Kinston, to our residents, that we maintain. Twelve thousand customer connections. Uh, there's twenty-two people is all we have in our electric division to do all of this work, to take care of these things, and make sure things are working like they're supposed to. Uh, so again, it's a lot of work. It's local. A lot of people don't realize that the City of Kinston Electric System covers two-thirds of Lenora County. I mean, we go well outside of the city limits, basically because we were the only provider there was way back in the day. Uh, so again, we try to provide that, not just for Kinston, but also for our neighbors in the county. Um, Andy mentioned local response. We talked about that. I said, these guys are here. It doesn't, it takes them fifteen, twenty minutes, depending on locations, to get to you or wherever there's a power outage any time of day. So we have people on call all the time. Most reliable. Uh, those are metrics that we don't produce. Those are metrics that the agencies that monitor how reliable the power providers are, provide to us, uh, and they have confirmed that, again, compared to Duke Energy and our other neighbors here, we are the most reliable provider. Our outages are shorter, they responded quicker, and put back on quicker than the others. Uh, and again, the lowest residential cost. Uh, for years, people used to talk about how our energy bills were higher than Duke, higher than, than other folks. Uh, but at this point, we are significantly lower than Duke for all our residential customers. Most of our other customer classes are lower than Duke at this point, too. Um, it's taken a while to get there. It's taken a lot of hard work to get there, but we are there, and we want to stay in that position. Um, and last, being a public provider, provider, the other thing that we do is we do have twenty-four seven local customer service. You aren't sent to a call center in Arizona, or India, or Pakistan, or anywhere else. If you call into our customer service line any time of day or night, you get to talk to a person here in Kinston to solve your issue. Um, not many people provide that type of service anymore. So we are very, very honored to be able to continue to do that. So again, I want to thank both these groups, uh, for all the things they do. Uh, you've already applauded for electric ones, but if you could, let's just do one more round of applause for both groups and their recognition.
Steve, will you have to come up front so we can get a picture with the ladies as well?
Be glad to, be glad to. Lead the way, ladies. One more photo op. You want in this one, too, Ian?
Uh, Steve. Steve. I would just, um, like to express how much it meant, the opportunity for, um, taking those high school students through the process of interviewing. You know, first of all, filling out the application, interviewing, and taking them through the whole process of obtaining gainful employment. Um, it was extremely pleasing to see, um, some of those interns out this summer in real time, um, a part of that team. And, you know, what was really clear is the mentorship, the on-the-job training, and how powerful is it, um, for a high school student to be able to say that they work for the city, um, as a part-time job in high school? Um, and I'm not sure if, um, like our linemen and, and, and those that work in public services, I'm not sure if they're, um, considered, um, first responders. But truly, they are. Um, and when we talk about how they literally work twenty-four seven, um, and making sure that our lights and things are on, you know what I'm saying, as quickly as possible, that's, that's truly appreciated. Truly appreciate it.
Well, thank you. We, we are very proud of the, the internships that we did this year in particular. Amazed at the results and students and their talents and their desire to learn and to pursue these careers, figure out what they want to do with their lives. So we're looking hard at what we're going to do this coming year to continue that. Uh, we actually will be talking in the high schools, uh, on Thursday this week about the careers and the internship opportunities that we have. So we'll be at all three, uh, Lenora County Public School, High Schools, South Lenora, North Lenora, and Kinston on Thursday. So if you got students that are at those schools, encourage them to pay attention. We'll be glad to teach them about all the opportunities that we have, uh, here. Uh, later in October, we will also be going to the eighth grade classes and talking to them about careers, uh, and internships so they can be thinking about that as they get ready to start their high school careers.
All right, thank you, Steve. You can go ahead with the presentation, Steve.
All right, so the item we're currently on in your agenda is to consider, conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of a four percent rate reduction in several of our electric rate classes. Um, we presented information back in September, talking about the opportunity that we have and what we might be able to do. Uh, we did a lot of study and a lot of work trying to prepare for this and figure out what we could do. As Andy Fusco had mentioned, uh, Kinston paid its last debt service payment, uh, back in June. So we knew there would be an opportunity to be able to share that reduction back with customers. Uh, so we wanted to take that, uh, very seriously and look at all the different aspects of our rates and what things are going on. So to kind of recap what we had talked about at the last meeting, we talked about the history of our rates. Kinston actually has not had a rate increase since two thousand nine. That's sixteen years. Uh, highly unusual to be able to do that. Um, when the last rate change we actually made was in twenty fifteen, was when we did a ten percent decrease. Uh, since twenty fifteen, we've had no other changes in our retail rates to any of our customers. So we've been able to hold the line on all of that. On the wholesale side, on what we pay to buy power and have power to give to our customers, we have had changes. We've had ups, we've had downs since twenty fifteen. Uh, energy charges overall have gone down, but demand charges have gone up. We have to pay both. Uh, many of our customer classes have demand and energy charges. Those customers may understand a little bit more about what that's about. Some of our classes are, it's all kind of combined into their bills. They don't see them individually. Uh, so we've had changes on both sides of that. In addition, we've had true-ups, which we talked about last time, too. At the end of a, a, a year, Duke Energy estimates what their cost is going to be to the power agency to provide power to all of members, like Kinston. Uh, at the end of the year, they go back and look at what their actual costs were, and if they were higher or lower, then they'll have a true-up. They'll have a change. Uh, and they'll have to collect that if they, if we underpaid Duke, or they, Duke will give us money back if we overpaid. Unfortunately, typically, Duke has been underestimating, and at the end of the year, we owe more money. So then, they will do a true-up. And so over the next eighteen, twenty-four months, uh, the power agency and the members will have to pay additional money to Duke, outside of our regular purchases. So those are things that we've been dealing with as well. We've had two true-ups that have already gone into effect. We have another one proposed to go into effect next year. And now they're talking about a one for the end of this year, which will go into effect the year after that. So these true-ups haven't gone away. They're working really hard to try to figure out ways to reduce this so they don't have that type of impact. But I kind of say all that just to say that although we're seeing all these things on the wholesale side, we have not passed any of that on to our retail customers. We, we had set our plan back in twenty fifteen to try to hold our rates steady. We were hoping to be able to get five years out of it. So far, we haven't ten years out of it. So we really have done a good job of being able to stay level and not have rate increases like some of the other members have had to have to their customers. Um, so that's kind of a background of what's been going on, on that side. Um, so some of the milestones in where we're, we got to today. Um, like we said, June, Nacampa paid, Nacampa paid the last of the debt payment that they owed on the loan. Each member paid a part of that. So Kinston had a owed on the loan. Each member paid a part of that. So Kinston had a share of that that we paid. So that ended in June. So that payment stopped. On the flip side of that, July 1st, the very next month, wholesale rates for Kinston and all the other members in NACMPA went up by 3.5%. So Kinston's paying more in July than we paid in June. We did have a debt go away, but we had this other factor come in, too. So knowing that these things were happening, knowing other changes are coming, we have been looking at a cost of service study. We conducted that, we started that last year, completed it in August, at the end of August, trying to figure out all the costs that are coming into play, and all of the revenues that we have, and seeing what can we give back and still hold our rates steady. Because that's still our goal. We don't want to have to do a rate reduction now and come right back in the next six months and do a rate increase. We'd rather be able to hold a rate and keep it steady, just like we have for the last 10 years, we haven't had any rate changes. That's part of our goal. So the cost of service study was designed to look at that. The original results of the cost of service study in the first draft, for all the rate classes we have, which we have small businesses, medium businesses, large businesses, residents, we have all these different classes, it recommended that the only people that would get a reduction would be large businesses. Residential and small business classes would actually see an increase. So we looked really hard at what the study was trying to say, just based on numbers, that's all it's looking at, is numbers. And we didn't feel like that was what we wanted to do in Kinston. That did not seem fair. So instead of doing that, we took that savings, that extra money that would allow us to hold that rate steady, and decided to split that evenly across the rate classes that we have proposed in this reduction. So every rate class will see that 4% reduction. So the amount an individual customer will get will depend on how much the bill was. So if their bills run $100 a month, they'd get $4 back off of that, 4%. If it was $200 a month, they get $8 back. So depending on how much you were using, you will see more or less of a dollar reduction, but it's all the same percent. Everybody gets 4%. So...
I'm hearing a lot of noise out there in the ordinance. We need to be quiet while it's doing the presentation.
All right. Looking forward, those are the things that we're at right now. Like we said, at this point, and we presented this last meeting, they are projecting that beginning in April, there will be wholesale cost increases. They were projecting 4.5% a year for each of the next four years. Again, when we were looking at this in our cost of service study, we put that into that play to see how far, how can we hold the line as long as we can and still be able to give a reduction. So again, that, those are things that went into play in figuring out where we're going to be. So like I said, if you offer more upfront, you have more rate increases coming sooner. So like I said, we're trying to hold the line for several years to not have any other increases. Whether the actual estimated future increases come in at the amounts they're saying, or higher or lower, we won't know until we get there. There's also several other things going on. Duke Energy's talking about a merger between their eastern and western agencies. That's going to have an impact on us. The state legislature made some changes in their carbon plan. That's going to have an impact on Duke. We don't know what that's going to be yet. There's just a lot of factors like that that we don't know. So we are just kind of using our best information, trying to figure out how to keep it steady and not have rate increases in the next few years. So to move forward with what we've done, what we presented tonight in the ordinance is the 4% reduction in the residential rate classes, small general service, medium general service, large general service, and coordinated demand control and rental lighting. That's all except for three very small closed groups. Every, all these groups would receive 4% reductions. On September 16th, City Council scheduled the public hearing for tonight to gather any public comments regarding this proposed change. Tonight, where we'll hold the hearing. After the public hearing, City Council can either decide to adopt the ordinance and reduce rates 4%, or you can decide to do something else. But if we're going to do any other type of change, we may have to look at a separate schedule. But for October, for tonight, if the rate change is adopted tonight, then the rates would go in effect with any bills issued after October 15th. So it'll be effective next week. With that, we'll go ahead and answer any questions, or you can proceed with the public here.
Anything from the council before we go into public hearing?
Yes, sir, Mayor. My heart. Steve, I asked earlier tonight, I know we would like to give the increase, we would like to have it more of an increase, but we don't want to give an increase to our citizens and then come January or February later when Duke comes back and say that they're going to up the rate. So my question again is, the rate stabilization fee that we have set up, how long can we continue to absorb the rate increases if they continue to come down the pipeline?
The rate stabilization fund that we have, it's a lump sum. And it is being used, when we talk about these true-ups, what we have been doing in Kinston is using that lump sum to pay the true-ups off. The true-ups are short-term fees that we pay. They may be 18 or 24 months, like I mentioned that earlier. So we, if we use our rate stabilization cost, then we don't have to change our wholesale cost, or some entities have even pushed riders out to their customers to cover these true-up costs. We aren't doing that, we're not passing that cost on. So for the two riders that are in effect today, the two riders that are proposed, at this point, it looks like our rate stabilization fund can cover those things so they don't result in any type of additional cost to our customers. I can't give you an exact time, it just depends on what comes next, but...
So when we had the buyout in 2015, and we were able to give back that percentage to our customers, and we kept that rate stabilization fund fee, or we started that rate stabilization fee, we were looking out for our residents then, because we knew price increases were going to possibly come. So that was a smart thing for us as a city moving forward. So my question, I guess, we can't control what Duke is going to do, and if they go before the utility commissions and ask for a rate increase, that rate increase is going to come down either way, and there's nothing that we can do about it or fight it, unfortunately. So I would hope that we can continue or sustain the rate stabilization fee as long as possible, so we can absorb those costs without passing them on to our constituents and our customers here in Kinston.
Yes, sir. We've got the same goal. The other, I think, question I've heard, or a couple of comments about is staying out of debt. Obviously, this debt payment's been a big deal. But it's not our debt. Again, it was part of the agency, and we just had a piece that we had to pay of it. As far as our electric system, we do not currently have any debt in our electric system. And our goal is to try to keep it that way. In addition to the rate stabilization fund, we started putting money aside for capital improvements. Capital projects, like we do in water and sewer, sewer in particular, we've ended up with a bunch of loans for sewer that we're having to pay, because we don't have the fund balance to cover that. We don't have capital funds set aside. Electric, we've been setting that money aside, so for electric capital projects, we can cash-fund those projects and not have to go after any loan funds or debt for those projects.
And Steve, since we have Andy here, I hate to put him on the spot, but with the true-ups, for all 32 cities that are part of electric cities, we all have to take care or pay part of that true-up. And we don't know the dollar amount most of the time with those true-ups until it's actually been dealt with. Andy, can you expound on that just a little bit?
Sure, yeah. Well, first off, to the first part of your question, yeah, the true-up is distributed based on what we call load ratio share, right? I mean, your percentage of what you use. So it's fairly and evenly, you know, distributed amongst the 32 members. With regard to the true-up process, the second part of your question, it's kind of, it's not a hard thing to get your head around, but I think the point is, at the end of the day, when all the true-ups and the end of the year comes, you're going to pay for the actual cost of the energy that you receive. So the unfortunate thing is, you can't accurately predict that into the future, but at the beginning of the year, Duke and us and everybody else has to do a forecast of that cost. And so what Steve kind of mentioned is, okay, so we got to set our rates at the beginning of the year on something, and it's on that forecast. And then when all the dust settles at the end of the year, well, we actually find out what that cost. And unfortunately for Duke, over the past two or three years, they, as Steve said, they underforecast. So, you know, happens a couple of times, approaching it a different way. So there's ways that we are looking ahead to kind of anticipate and guess wrong maybe the other way. You're going to guess wrong either way, but instead of doing what we call a 50/50 forecast, shooting for the mean, potentially shoot for a little over that forecast, so that if there's a surprise, it's a good surprise and the actual costs were a little lower. So I know that's a tough pill to swallow when you got to go the other way, but at the end of the day, after all the true-ups are said and done, you are actually paying for the cost of the energy you're getting.
So when we have extremely hot days, that could cause a change in our consumption. If we have extremely cold days, that causes a change in our consumption as well, correct?
It does, it does. And, you know, fortunately, that kind of averages itself out over the 365 days of the year. But, yeah, if we have an unusually hot year, then everybody's going to pay more. But if you're paying on that rate, they're paying for what they use, what they consume, as opposed to some structural issue with the rate, if that makes sense. There've been a lot of things that have impacted it. If, I'll just name a few. Two or three years ago, gas prices were really high. That was a significant impact on why Duke missed that true-up a few years ago. Steve mentioned the carbon plan. Because of the carbon plan, Duke is having to retire coal plants earlier and build combined cycle plants, you know, sooner than you would have needed otherwise. We are in an inflationary environment, and the capital costs of those plants are very high. And so you're seeing those costs now. Now, there are some good things, right? Steve mentioned the change in the legislation. The legislation pushed off some of those earlier targets in that carbon plan, so you're going to see a little bit of a benefit offsetting those capital costs. And then finally, and I'll stop with this one, is Steve mentioned the merger of the operational entities of Duke. The good news there is, the eastern side of the state, when they were separate, was the high side of that cost curve. So now, when they merge and they average, eastern will get the benefit of the low cost on the western side of the state. So you'll get a bit of a break in your cost because of those efficiencies gained on the Duke system. So you win some and you lose some, is the kind of the way I'd describe that.
So this window, this, you know, as we sit and wait, what happens with the wholesale prices? Is there a deadline to that? Like, when's the deadline that this decision is made?
Oh, with regard to the calendar year? So we have, going into the calendar year, and in fact, coming up at Electric Cities, we're setting the budgets for the power agencies for 2026 right now. So our projections are more or less getting set right now for 2026. And those increases that Steve referenced were baked into that. We don't know what the actual cost, you got to get through the entire year before you get to the actual cost, and then there's bookkeeping on Duke's ends and everything. So it's a few months after the first of the year where we actually learn what the true-up is, and then we got to incorporate that into what we charge our members after the fact. So it's a process.
The only thing I'd like to add to that, on the merger between Duke, which Andy mentioned, we think is going to bring down our costs a little bit. They're talking about it now. Their proposed effective date of their merger at this point isn't until 2027. So once they get it finalized and approved by the utility commission, then we'll know for sure what the impacts may be. And then maybe we'll be coming back and coming back with another rate reduction, or maybe another way just to keep holding the rate and not having increases. Anything we can do to keep away from the increases, it would be a good thing.
Steve, and the last question, I think. With Duke doing the merger, is that considered with North Carolina and South Carolina, would that be considered a monopoly for the state of North Carolina? How do they look at that going forward?
You're talking about the Security and Exchange Commission, Trade Commissions at that point. I can't answer that question. I don't know if anybody can. Okay?
So nationwide, there are different local retail markets. They're constructed differently. It just so happens, in both North Carolina and South Carolina, we are what's called a regulated, retail regulated state. So in other words, it doesn't apply to you all, because this is the regulatory body for your electric department. However, for Duke, and also for Dominion, who also serves in this state, they're regulated by the Utilities Commission. So in other words, the Utility Commission approves their rates. They have to propose a rate and they approve those rates. And in exchange for that regulation, traditionally, utilities are granted a service area. So in other words, with retail regulation doesn't come retail competition. So in other words, Kinston can't go into Duke's area and say, hey, we got a better rate, why don't you be with us instead of Duke? It doesn't work that way. So it is a, what's called a regulated monopoly.
Well, on the city side, we experienced that when we have companies and we want industry to come here, we end up sometimes losing our electric portion to other companies outside of the city, such as Duke or Dominion. So people ask, you know, why we don't have more corporations or industry here? And when they come, they come and they say, we got a Sunshine Project coming to Kinston, they're expecting to hire 350 people, they expect to do so much power. Who can give us the better rate? And we give a rate, but sometimes Duke has a better rate, and they tend to go with Duke as far as being their electrical provider. However, we have more reliable service here with Kinston, because we have people that are on the ground, ready to respond within five to 10 minutes, whereas Duke has someone, has to send somebody from out of town to get here to us. The last question is, as cities and towns go across, and I just know La Grange for example, they have pay-as-you-go. How has that been for other cities or municipalities that you might be aware of?
Okay, so yeah, I've been, I've seen that in other communities. So prepay is what I think, what we call it. And so, you know, much like your car, when you buy gasoline for your car, you pay for the gasoline before you consume it. It's the same concept with electricity. So in other words, a customer would put money into their account at the beginning of the month, or some, whatever period they want, really, and say, okay, I want to put $50 on my account. And then, you know, they will then consume electricity, and that $50 will trick down, you know, as they consume electricity and they got to refill it. And generally, you know, the utility will give them a notice saying, hey, you got to put more money in the counter, or whatever. So where that comes into play is where you have folks who don't necessarily pay their bill. And so customers in that situation, believe it or not, tend to like it, and this is why. Because if you have a credit risk customer, generally, utilities will require a high deposit on that account. So in other words, the customer has to put a lot of money upfront in that account. The benefit to the utility is, they have fewer, it's impossible almost to have a bad account where the customer racks up a lot of money and doesn't pay, because they're paying in advance, so they've already paid. So some customers like it in that situation, because they don't have to pay the high deposits. The utility likes it, because it prevents bad debt.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Steve.
Anything for the front accounts?
Yeah, I just wanted to share some appreciation for the presentation tonight, Mr. Steve, and to our entire public services team. They, most of them have left the room now, but it is so important, so I think valuable to us, that we have a public power agency here in Kinston, that we have publicly controlled power here in Kinston. Because to Councilman Swinson's question, yes, Duke is a monopoly. And what that means is, Duke is a big corporation. At the end of the day, they're in the business of making money for their shareholders. The rest of us customers who pay Duke Energy for our electric bills, we're lining the pockets of their shareholders. Yes, they provide a very important service, but they're a regulated monopoly. At the end of the day, they're a corporation. And so even though the city of Kinston provides, or purchases power, excuse me, from Duke Energy, we do provide and manage our own electric system here. And these are the people you met earlier who are providing this exceptional service to our community. And so I think it's so incredible that we have been able to maintain the rate that we have. We're now considering a decrease of rates, even if it's only 4%. New Bern right now is going up on a rate increase. Greenwood's going up on a rate increase, I think of 3.7%. So they're looking at increasing their rates almost 4%, and at least we're in a position to decrease ours about 4%. So I'm very grateful that we've had a city staff who have been very thoughtful and strategic in how we manage our finances, how we consider the electric services, and how we consider rate increases, so that even if we're not providing the level of relief that we know all of us need in this world right now, everything is going up. Cost of services, cost of production, cost of labor, everything is going up. But we're able to at least provide some small level of relief, knowing that, yes, there's a possibility for future increases in the future, because we're purchasing electric from, again, a monopoly, a corporation that is trying to line the pockets of their shareholders. So thank you, Mr. is trying to line the pockets of their shareholders. So thank you, Mr. Steve. I do hope that we can, as a city, still continue to explore other options to provide more relief for our customers. Because another part of the equation that a lot of people don't want to admit, well, one is the fact that your utility bill is not just your light bill. So many people get it in the mail, I gotta pay my light bill. But you're also paying for your garbage, your stormwater, sewage, everything else that's included in that bill. It's a utility bill, not just an electric bill. But two, a lot of the homes here in Kinston are old, old homes that have been around for a long time, have not been properly insulated, don't have new windows, are using older appliances. And that means that your house is using a lot of additional energy, is consuming a lot more energy, causing you to spend more on, on electric than most other people who may live in a more modernized, more energy efficient home. You know, our city does provide a very, very unique service here, thanks to our partnership and membership in Electric Cities called an energy audit. We've talked about it in previous meetings, we talked about it in the last meeting, I wanna talk about it again tonight. It's a program where if you call our customer service line, 939-3282, if you wake up thinking about your electric bill in the middle of the night at 3:00 AM, somebody's gonna pick up that phone and can walk you through the process of getting an energy audit. And what that means is professionals will come to your house, walk through and show you some of the things that may be causing extra energy consumption in your house, whether that's drafty windows, poor insulation, an old refrigerator in the garage that you know you probably should get rid of, it's just holding beer. Like, you know, those are things that are consuming extra energy in your home, and we can point out those, those improvements that you can make. But not only do we provide that service, if you actually make some of the improvements that are pointed out to you, you can get credits on your electric bill. So if you decide, yeah, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a new energy efficient stove, or new upgrades to certain things in my house, there are actual credits that we have lined up on our city website, and the city staff can walk you through it, that you can get credits for making those improvements. Because not only are you trying to lower your bill, you're lessening the load, the electric demand on our whole electric system by having more energy efficient products in your house. So that's a service I do encourage everybody to do. Even if you live in a brand new house, you know you got a brand new Samsung stove in your kitchen. Like, call us anyway and have an energy audit person come through and talk about ways you can lower your bill even more. But there's so many great services that we do provide in the city of Kinston. I want people to, you know, take a look and take advantage of these services. And also, there's even other services outside of the city of Kinston. The state of North Carolina still offers a weatherization assistance program to help you get more insulation and energy approved, or energy efficiency improvements in your home. So there's a lot of good programs out there that we just need to make sure our citizens know about and are taking advantage of. So thank you so much again for this presentation. I'm grateful that we're able to offer some level of relief, some level of decrease. I'm very grateful to our staff who work around the clock tirelessly, tirelessly, excuse me, to manage our electric service and the public services we do provide. But I just want to be clear to our community that this is a public utility that we're very proud to offer here in Kinston. I think it's very important that we offer. I don't want people to keep making those very unfair comparisons between us and Duke Energy, because at the end of the day, they're trying to make money. They're in the business of making money. The city of Kinston's in the business of providing a service. And, and I'll close on that note. Thank you, Mr. Steve.
Thank you, Ms. Suggs, Steve, and?
Mayor Protem, a couple there. Can Chris open the door a little bit? Want to tell everybody too, all these great things Chris talked about, we are having a city services fair at Holloway Recreation Center Thursday night, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Our staff and public service will be there to talk about exactly these things Chris is talking about. Other departments are there too. If you want a job, HR's gonna be there, talk about jobs that are available. Police will be there, fire will be there, planning will be there. They have a home repair program they're getting ready to, to work on. So these are great opportunities. Just come out and learn all about it. We'll be glad to talk to you. Any other time, call us. We'll, we'll still be glad to talk to you about it. Second from that, I did want to put this slide back up. We shared this at the last meeting, and we talked about this tonight. Kinston's rates, residential rates, are about 20% below Duke's. That's, you know, the 4% reduction we're talking about now is gravy on top of that, but we are significantly below them. And that's what we're working hard to maintain. So again, just trying to get to the public hearing. This is what's on the agenda tonight. Hold the public hearing, and then consider adopting that 4% reduction in the rate classes is what we've, we've got proposed.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Also, Councilman Suggs for pointing out those things that we've talked about at each meeting leading up to this point. Also, Steve mentioned earlier, if they go up 3% and we reducing the rates by 4%, now you got a 7% decrease. So think about that as well. And saying that, we're gonna hold a public hearing and consider adoption of, of ordinance to reduce the electric rates by 4% in multiple customer rate classes. We are currently now in a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak in favor of or opposition of? Anybody want to speak in favor of the rate or not in favor of the rate? Please come up. Excuse me, before you come up, Ms. Blackwell. Mr. Turner, you like down the vein?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
I keep hearing everybody talk about the rates, increase, decrease. What are the rates? Everywhere else I've ever lived, Detroit, Goldsboro, Minnesota, New Bern, on my electric bill, I see exactly what I'm paying per kilowatt or per gallon. On my electric bill here, all I see is the last meter reading and the current meter reading and how much I owe. So these guys keep throwing out rate increases, rate reductions. We need to know what these numbers are. First, we need to know what is the rate? What am I paying per kilowatt? What am I paying per gallon? Okay, so we need to know that before we adopt anything. We don't even know what rates we're adopting. Okay? So let me get back on track. Good evening, council members and residents. Tonight, I stand here before you guys to speak about the truth about this 4% increase, I mean, decrease being proposed. Let's keep it 100. This is not a real solution for the people of Kinston. It's a token gesture that does little to address the real concerns we have going on here in our neighborhood. You know, these people, we're paying real high utility bills to the point, we're at a breaking point. Some of these people are at breaking points, to the point they got to choose whether they're gonna pay their utility bills or eat. And then let's look at the real numbers. Like, and these numbers, I'm a little bit on the low end, because when I called to get the numbers as to how much we would get back into the city, I was told 3.4 million. And I see Stephen got 3.8 million there now. So these numbers aren't even accurate. They should be better than this. You know, you guys are talking about a 4, 4 cent decrease on per hundred bill. That's only giving us, you know, and we do have a utility revenue, it looks like over $50 million, right? So this is only giving us back $20,000, a little over $20,000 out of 3. It's gonna be better than that now, cause it's 3.8 million. If you give us like, you guys got, it's only 12,400 people on the city of Kinston Utilities. Although you do provide water for 27,000 and some odd people, it's only 12,400 of us that are on your utilities. And if we keep it 100, if we split that three, if, let's say, if you guys were to use it all and give it back to the community, which I know that'll never happen, but it's possible, it can, cause he's keep talking about putting money up for later. But we're struggling now. See, these other cities you guys are talking about, they didn't take a increase in the utility and a increase in the taxes too. We took them both. We took them both. And, and, and he's not, I don't think he's being honest about how much we can have. A forensic study showed me that each resident, each, each resident with the amount, if we use all that money we just got back, and it's better than this, I'm .4 off. But each resident would get back $274. A household would be 685. He coming up here giving them stuff with eight and $12. Eight and $12 compared to the 274 and the 685 we could get if we used all this money on the people that really put it in there. I heard him say, I posed a question, nobody could answer, so thank you. I do know that Kemp will pay it off now. I was wondering how it was paid off, you know? None of this stuff is transparent. I wanna know how much. I never really got into this stuff, but when you playing with my money, I'm into it now. Cause I wanna know how much kilowatt am I paying and how much per gallon am I paying? Know where on that bill it is. So until he could tell us that, I don't think, we should adopt that until we know that. You know, there's three ways this thing can be done. You know, we could give these people a 274, like a city stimulus, $274 per resident, per resident, or 685 per household. We could give them $22 a month out their bill. Or we, he need to come up with a guaranteed cap. I noticed Robbie asked some questions. He can't answer the questions about how, how are we capped? What's gonna be, the next thing is, what's gonna be done with this 3.3 million dollars that's gonna be left over? It's gonna just sit in the bank? When we're struggling, we don't care about revenue for the city. When we're struggling, we're worried about the revenue for the city when we get back above water. This is our money. You know, he coming up here with these numbers, he, he making 100, over $100,000 a year. He don't care what happens here. As long as he can keep getting that $100,000 a year. That's all he cares about. You know? Now I'm gonna make sure, let me make sure I don't miss nothing off of this forensic, the true numbers. Ask yourselves, that's what I want y'all to do. Is this the best thing for Kinston? Just a 4% increase, decrease? Are we that worried about a city versus the people in the city? Like, we could go without some of this other stuff to give some relief to these people. These people are coming in here telling y'all, I'm about to lose my house, or is that the goal? The forces out of houses. Cause that's where we headed. But anyway, like I said, if the entire 3.4 billion was distributed, each household would receive two, each resident would receive $274, or each household could be 685. And no, we're not asking y'all to do that, but we're asking y'all to come a whole lot better than what you've come. Eight and $12, they don't even buy a meal no more. They don't even have a $5 meal at Burger King, McDonald's no more. That don't even buy a meal. So that's not benefiting us. We ask that you use the 3.4 million to provide meaningful relief, not just a token of, of decrease. You know, we could have programs, we could use some of this money to have energy programs to assist people that cannot afford it themselves, the elderly, the low income housing, you know, not just leap once a year. Y'all raising these, I mean, this stuff going on all year. Once a year, we have a program that come around and help people with their utilities, cause like Chris said, it's not the light bill. My water bill is the worst part of mine. And I'm myself 300, $400, and I'm there by myself with $5. I don't understand it. I really don't. But anyway, I'm asking that, before y'all vote on this proposal, I urge you guys to do a full forensic audit on what we just paid off. Let's not just take one person's word. This city leadership lacks integrity. I'm not interested in taking one person's word. I don't have, know why you guys have a problem with ordering audits? Like, these people are playing you guys in your face, city council. And they're attempting to play us in our face. But this ain't the face to be played in. I'm asking you guys, wholeheartedly, look at these numbers forensically. Have somebody come in and audit Ms. Rogers' department? Stephen, go behind Stephen? Cause that, that, $4 and $8 and $12 don't sound good to me when you split that 300, 3.8 million up between 12,000 people. Again, what's gonna be done with the rest of the money? Like, he didn't mention that. He get bubbled, babble. Is it gonna go in the fund for later, or are we scroungling? Like you said, Robbie, Duke gonna do what they do anyway. So let's not concern ourselves with that. Let's concern ourselves with using this 3.4 million dollars to bring some, 3.8 now, to bring some relief to the people and worry about the revenue. We should have a lot of revenue already. So I'm, we don't agree with that 4% decrease. Have a forensic audit tell us what we should be able to offer the residents.
Will there be any, anybody else to speak in favor of or opposition of? Anybody to speak in favor of or opposition of? Hear none?
Yes.
Is it Ms. Willie Mae Brown?
Declined.
Okay, she declined.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. If not, is there anything else on the council?
So are we going to address?
Steve?
To address what was stated?
The question that was asked.
Yeah, I'll be glad to try to address the points Ms. Blackwell brought up. She mentioned that we're only giving $20,000 back. The actual amount of this rate reduction is about $2 million a year that we're reducing rates. So that's the amount of reduction that is gonna be given back to customers. She talked about doing a $274 credit, whether the numbers are accurate or not accurate for, for what that was based on. With the rate reduction, like we said, this is about $6 a month for the average bill. We're proposing to be able to hold rates until 2030 at that rate. That works out to $300 that the average customer would get back through that period, if we do the rate reduction. If we don't do that, if you did a lump sum type payment, you get one payment, your rate stays high.
And Steve, the rates are all on the website and have been there for quite some time.
All of our rate classes are on the website. The ones that are being considered tonight are included in the agenda. Some rates have multiple parts to them, makes it hard to put all of those parts on one bill. So the bill shows your charges, and it does show your consumption as well, so you can see your consumption. And if you need help working through how that bill is calculated, we'll be glad to do that with any customer.
Hey, Ms. Blackwell, you can't, no, you had your time at the podium. He trying to answer your question?
We have several different rates for different types of customers, depending on the type of utility use, depending on whether it's residential, depending on if you're in the load management system. They are, again, all posted on the website, but the standard residential rate is around, what, 7.1 cents per kilowatt hours?
That's about right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the council? If not, there's nothing else on the council. This public hearing is closed. Mr. Turner, you have anything?
[inaudible]
At this time, I'm gonna entertain a motion. Motion waived by Councilman Swenson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Suggs. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Continuation of consideration of development agreement with Smart Kinston Foundation, Ms. Elizabeth Bunt. This is a public hearing.
All right. Oh, Jesus. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. This is the continuation of the consideration of a development agreement with Smart Kinston Foundation. Just to kind of give you a recap of what we've been talking about for the past couple of presentations, staff submitted a request for proposal to purchase and redevelop the Glen Raven Mills property in January of 2024. The property is located at 800 Manny Street in the Mitchell Town Arts and Cultural District. Staff conducted a tour in February with individuals who were interested in the property. The request closed in March with only one submitted from Smart Kinston Foundation. Staff received this request, which were originally on the August 19th agenda. It was continued and presented again on September 2nd and is presented tonight from the continuation of the September 2nd meeting. Per the submitted proposal, Smart Kinston would like to redevelop the property into a vibrant cultural hub that celebrates the arts and fosters community engagement. Go back up one. Go back another. There you go. The property is located, as we stated, in Manny The property is located, as we stated, on Manning Street. It is approximately 12 acres and includes three structures. An approximately 100,000 square foot mill, an approximately 1,200 small brick office building, and an approximately 20,200 square foot accessory building. The property is owned industrial. As far as surrounding zoning districts, to the north is B1 and RA6, which is residential. To the south is I1, which is industrial. To the east is RA5 and RA6, which is residential. And then the west is I1, which is industrial. As far as adjacent and nearby land uses, to the north is a church and single-family dwellings. To the south is a wooded lot in Nus River. To the east is a church and single-family dwellings. And to the west is social house vodka and the old power plant. A portion of the property is located in the floodplain, and the developer will be able to tell you the plans for the back of the property when he speaks in the public hearing. This is a photo of how the mill used to look. It's a historic picture. The structure was built in 1908 and remained in operation until 2003. The mill expanded in the 1950s, the 60s, and the 70s. A copy of the agreement has been available in the City Clerk's office for review prior to this meeting and is also a part of your, your meeting package. A detailed timeline and letter to council was also included in your package. Public notice was published in the Kinston Free Press on August 7th, 7th, and 14th. Letters were sent to adjacent property owners within 200 feet of the property. A public hearing was also, a sign was also placed on the property. Per 160D general statute, the continuance of the public hearing does not constitute re-advertising. This is a photo of the bike ramps that the developer would like to include in one of the structures. As I recap, the highlighted points from the development agreement, our developer's agreement, has 120-day due diligence period. The developer has 120 days from conveyance of the property to secure building permits. The developer is also responsible for all construction, rehabilitation, repairs, and improvement to the property. All work should be completed by July 31st, 2027. The developer should invest a minimum of 2.5 million to redevelop the property. The developer must abide by the Brownfield Agreement and certain land use restrictions. The city will convey the property without cost and does not promise or assure that it will provide any staffing or function, or funding in connection with the developer's intended operation or use of the property. The developer shall operate the property for a minimum of 10 years and shall not reconvey the property without consent. Property will be conveyed as is. An agreement is this for 20 years and can be extended. As I stated, in your package includes a complete proposal, a timeline, the entire Brownfield Agreement, and restrictions. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions at this time.
Is there anything from the council?
Yep, Ms. Blunt, no questions for Ms. Blunt, but on the action in general, before we get to the public hearing. I did want to set the record straight and address something that honestly shouldn't even have to be cleared up if you attended or listened to the previous meeting where this was discussed. But I do understand that sometimes comprehension can struggle in long meetings that we participate in and, and projects of this magnitude and impact. But after that meeting, I began hearing from people who ironically are in this room tonight. I'm so grateful they're in this room tonight so they can hear from me directly, that I shut this program down, this project down. I single-handedly, one council member, shut this project down. But one, it clearly was not shut down because it's back on the agenda tonight. And two, it was tabled unanimously, not shut down, but table unanimously by this council, after multiple members of the board expressed some particular things that we wanted to see in the proposal, that Mr. Steven and Smart Kinston were very glad to cooperate and provide us that information. That's the process, that is the process that we go through when we consider these type of development agreements and proposals for the city of Kinston. But what bothered me so much, aside from just the, the chaos and everything of someone insinuating that I could single-handedly shut a project down, like, this is a body who has to be and should be, even if not all the time, really should be very thoughtful, considerate, and careful in how we spend city resources, how we allocate city resources, including land and property like this. We deserve to give these, especially something of this size and magnitude that's gonna impact the surrounding neighborhood, have a significant economic impact on our community, impact on quality of life for the people who live by and will potentially patronize this project. We should be very thoughtful and considerate in how we make decisions related to it. We should not rush into any decision about a, what's, a 12-acre property right in the heart of a neighborhood that the city owns, like, potentially it's gonna take millions of dollars investment. That's something that should take some time and conversation and dialogue and careful planning. That was the point that I made in the previous meeting. It seemed to be the point that my colleagues also all agree with because we voted unanimously to table it. So I just wanted to clear that up because I, I can't stand pettiness and personal attacks because this is about public service. This isn't, this isn't politics up here, this is about public service. And so the personal attacks, people insinuating that I personally shut this project down, that I did it with the intent of somehow personally benefiting me or the organization I work for and lead outside of my role as a city council member, that's absolutely ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. So I wanted to clear that up because this is a council that should be, and I think takes very seriously, is charged to thoughtfully consider projects of this magnitude. That was the request I made to the board the last time we discussed this. The conversations, Mr. Steven and I have had, I think, three conversations now about this, this project. And I told him, like, it's not about the project itself, I want to see it happen. In fact, I want to see Smart Kinston end up with this, this facility and develop it because have, if you've seen the investments that both Steven Hill personally, but also the nonprofit organization Smart Kinston have made in Mitchell Town in the Arts and Cultural District, no one else is trying to make that type of investment in that neighborhood. No one else is bringing in artists from around the country to make that type of impact on this community, making Kinston a destination for people to come here and visit the public art and the sculptures that are in our downtown and our Mitchell Town neighborhood. So we want to see people who've invested that type of thoughtfulness and knowledge and skill and money in our community. We want to see them move to the next scale and do even greater projects. But what we as a body have a responsibility to do is to make sure that when it's dealing with city resources, that we think carefully about the, how those city resources are being spent, that we think strategically and that we actually talk things out and we have things written in, in, in paper about how we're gonna meet milestones and deadlines and where the money is coming from. Because this is gonna be a big expensive undertaking. This is gonna be a lot of money that goes into this project. And so as a city council member with a fiduciary responsibility for the city of Kinston and the taxpayers who pay taxes in the city of Kinston, I want to make sure before we give a piece of property away that we know how the money is gonna actually develop this property and the economic impact it's gonna be having on the community. So those are the conversations that I've had with some of my colleagues, that I've had with Mr. Steven. It's about process, it's not about the project and it's not personal. And so I hate to get impassioned about this tonight, but y'all, this is serious business. City government, city operations, public service, the, the circus that we're seeing happening right now in this community, this is not how it should operate. And so I just wanted to make sure that the record was set straight in this meeting tonight before we continue on with the public hearing and voted on, on this discussion or this decision.
Anything further from the council? If not, we're gonna go into a public hearing for continuation of consideration of development agreement with Smart Kinston Foundation.
Mayor Protem, can I, can I make, make one observation?
Yes, Mr. Turner.
Because this matter got pushed back a couple of meetings, most of the debt, the timeline, which Ms. Blunt went over with you, most of the timeline is drafted in number of days. But there is one date in the agreement by which the development is supposed to be completed. There's 120 days due diligence, and then a conveyance of the property, and then 120 days to secure permits. And then there's 19 months for a development period. With the two months delay we've had, that 19 months would actually be October 31st, 2027, which would be a change to Section 1.4 of the agreement. So with, with that technical correction, it's ready for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We are currently now in a public, a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak in favor of or opposition of, please, please come to the podium. If you would like to speak in favor of, of opposition of, please come to the podium. Yes, one at a time, please.
I'm short, sorry. My name is Christy Kelly, I live at 407 Manning Street in one of the houses from the Smart Kinston Artist Program, and I've been a part of the program for about five years now. I'm here to show my support for this, for this project. I walk my dogs by that building all the time, it's an eyesore. I've seen the pictures of what it looks like inside, it's a danger. There's, the neighborhood that I live in is beautiful. My neighbors sit out on the front porch, we know each other, we hang out. You can walk anywhere around in Mitchell Town at any time of day, it's never a problem. If he's already shown what can be done when you invest in the city and when you invest in where you live, I see no reason why we can't continue that momentum, continue moving forward, continue changing something that is a blight into something that could have so much potential. Now when I drive down Queen Street, I see the beautiful Paramount Building. That's from the same group of people who are trying so hard to make Kinston the potential that I see every day. I was supposed to read this and I didn't. So I'm just asking you to seriously consider letting this project move forward. It's a benefit for the community, it's a benefit for my neighborhood, it's a benefit for all of us to have something more than what we have right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Council. Danny Webb, 1601 Stockton Drive, Kinston. Thank you guys laid out the plan pretty good there. When we started in 2016, Kinston News Holden, we were inspired by Mr. Hill. And what he inspired us with was the foundation that he laid in our community for revitalization. But not only that, he, he actually is a champion of diversity and culture and inclusion in our community, trying to bring art to our community, which is a, a big, it's a, it's a win for our community. But this property that you're looking at, I would challenge you to say, how much is it costing the city right now? I know it's costing a lot of money to the city right now. So that's the thing we didn't hear, it's thousands of dollars a month. It is dangerous. And nobody is kicking down the city's doors to revitalize that property. Nobody. And this man is providing you with a, a resource that we would be let down as a community if you didn't take because this is private money that is not coming out of the city's coffers. And it would be a, a big disappointment to see this not happen. So we, we support him fully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Well. Would there be any others to speak in favor of or opposition of?
Hello, my name is Kevin Albritton, 1901 Pawnee Drive in town. Councilman Suggs, I appreciate you clearing up everything and saying, you know, that y'all do take these kind of things seriously. There has been a huge investment from Steven Hill downtown, and we want to keep that momentum going. And I feel like some of that is having some trust in his background and what they've done. I'm the one that has all the, the ramps, I'm sure if you ever hear about it. I put it on social media a lot. We were donated those by Ryan Nyquist, he, if you've ever watched the X Games on TV, he's a really good friend of mine who lives down in Wilmington. He's the Olympic coach, or has been the past two times, and he's very much aware of what we're trying to do and trying to be supportive of it. We have about $350,000 worth of ramps and all the resources. I bring about almost 30 years of experience in this field. I was very active, if you remember when Greenville was Pro Town and Dave Mira and all the stuff that was going on over there. So we have a huge team behind us. I've been approached by other cities to get this, and I'm very much a champion for Kinston. I love this town, I grew up in that neighborhood. My parents still live right there. I want to see this here in town. I feel like one thing that we have to offer, you know, we can do the same old, same old thing as other cities, but if we look and do something a little bit different, that can make us unique and bring people here. The other only facility that's somewhat like this is up in Cleveland, Ohio. They have people that fly in from all over the world, all year round to go there. I've been there many times, so we're trying to kind of use that as our, our background on doing it. And I think that we can bring something very unique and just expand on that. And I'll, you know, myself will be out there doing everything I can to make it happen, raise funds, do whatever, to make this a reality. So I just want to say, I do appreciate everything y'all do for Kinston and y'all's, you know, even, you know, trying to support this. You know, anything I can do, I appreciate it, and we do appreciate Steven too.
Would there be any others to speak in favor of or opposition of?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Bob Lawrence, I live at 416 Mitchell. And I've lived in Kinston for 11 years. I've been a member of Smart Kinston for 10 years. And I've seen the city go through a lot of change, a lot of positive change. And this, I think, will be a good move forward. I'm in full approval of this. It could bring more attention to the town, frankly. Yes, it is an eyesore. And when you see something like that, people are going to be unlikely to want to move here when they see these kinds of damages. I think this and many of these other projects are very important. This will also be good for the youth, because if anyone knows, growing up, especially in the last couple of decades, the streets are a dangerous place, and every little bit helps. The more programs, the more activities there on the streets, the more time the youth spends doing something productive, something positive, something that keeps them away from negative energy and negative process of life. And I think this is going to be good for us. I do approve, or I do highly agree with how this is going. I'm sorry, I'm a bit nervous. But, um, yes, I, I fully approve of this. Thank you for hearing me.
All right, thank you.
How y'all doing? I had to say something. Thank y'all, anyway, appreciate you, you're exactly right, it needs to be a process. But, you know, the proof is in the pudding, what he's done, his vision and how he's brought it by, the catalyst that we have going downtown. We got an awful lot of stuff going on. I know there's some underlying issues with that property, but it's like Danny said, it, it's not going anywhere. I mean, it, it, nobody was sitting there, you had one person come out and put a proposal in. Main thing is, it's a great segue to the Riverwalk, if they ever get started on the true Riverwalk that comes behind it, which will tie it all together. I mean, we've got, what does New Bern have? They got the river, right? That's our best asset and it's covered up. Every bit of it's in the floodplain, it's not even being utilized. We got so much access over there behind Lincoln City, on the other side of Duke property. If it could ever come together where we could come up with a plan, we've got the best piece right here. This is the perfect place. Just, all I can tell you is, he's an inspiration, he's inspired me, y'all inspire me, thank y'all for listening, but please, make this happen. There's a lot of people behind it.
Name an address, sir.
Hey, sir.
Sir? Name an address, please. Name an address.
Stacy Heath, it's like, beside 1403 Queen Street. There's three properties right here, I can't remember the addresses.
Thank you, Stacy. Would there be any others to speak in favor of or opposition of?
Hello, everybody. Hope you're doing good. I'm Stephanie Holland, and I live at 307 Atlantic Avenue, right in downtown like most of these fine folks here. I'm not a member of the Smart program, but I've always supported it since I moved here eight years ago. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the Smart Kinston initiative to transform the old Glen Raven property into a thriving cultural and recreational hub for the community. I want to speak specifically on the BMX Park. The plan to repurpose the metal building into an Olympic-quality BMX and skateboarding park is an exciting opportunity for Kinston. This project already has a strong start with $350,000 worth of ramps and other equipment promised, which is awesome. I didn't even know about the 2.5 million that was gonna be promised through the Smart, uh, Smart Kinston program. So I mean, that's already almost $3 million in investment, that's incredible. I do agree that it's a process and a plan is important, but it sounds like it's already a very strong start. I also want to express strong support for Kevin Albritton. I've known him since I've moved here as well, I know that he has always wanted this project to go through. And I think that him and everyone that he considers on his team is gonna be, they're gonna be amazing stewards for this project. Obviously, with the project hopefully going forward, anything like that. You know, it is an eyesore. is an eyesore. Blight is a very poetic word, Kristy Kelly is quite the poet, if you all read her articles on the News-News, but, yeah, I'm definitely, I'm looking forward to everything this project can accomplish, and I really, really want y'all to know that I appreciate y'all's contributions to the community, the Smart program, and everyone who's involved. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is April Houston, I'm the executive director of RAD, my office is at 1200 Hull Road here in Kinston. I go to a lot of meetings because of my job and what I do. And the consistent thing that I hear almost every meeting I go to is there's nothing here for our youth here in Lenore County. Now, I'm not going to agree with that, there are things for our youth in Lenore County, but I also want to make sure that we are continuing to add things here in Lenore County for our youth, and for adults, for that fact. And if this can come to fruition, and they can have this park, how can it hurt? That's just something else for our youth, adults, and families to do together. So I am in support of this, and I really hope y'all will be too. Thanks.
Would there be any elders to speak in favor of or opposition of?
Good evening, council members. My name's Sarah Fum Smith, and I live at 904 Cary Road. I came to Kinston almost 10 years ago through the Smart Kinston program, and I fully put my support and believe in what Stephen is doing here, and I would please ask that you do too. I do reporting for North Carolina Weekend on PBS, and so I'm familiar with eastern North Carolina, and I'm always looking for neat and interesting things that people can do, and I can tell you that a project like this would really further put Kinston on the map. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for hearing all this. I appreciate everyone that came out in support tonight. I do want to address a few issues, such as the back of the building, which is in the floodplain. Obviously, that's one of the first things we're going to look at, more than likely that back part of the building's going to have to come down, is so rotten as it is. But the integrity of the front of the building and the beauty and historic nature of what the property will be will still be intact. You know how much I am into historic preservation, and I will promise you that I will do that. But the biggest part of this whole project is one, is one thing, which is this BMX bike park. That could put us in a totally different league. You know, Cleveland revitalized itself through, I hate to say this, but through brewing beer at a BMX park. We can do the same thing here in Kinston, and it will give us things for our youth to do, our adults, I mean, I don't know how old Kevin is, but he still rides. Anyway, parking, I think I've addressed that, there's enough parking there, there's at least 120 spaces for the property. But I think it's just something, it's time to do something with it. It's bad to go into a building when you see the sunshine in the, through the roof and the dark soil beneath your feet, because it's that rotten. Anyway, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I think I've given you all your information. Do you think I need to answer anything else?
Mr. Hill?
Okay, yes, sir.
You didn't tell us the address, sir.
Oh, I'm not going to give you my phone number. Stephen Hill, 200 North Queen Street, Kinston, North Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would there be any elders speaking in favor of or opposition of? Anything else from the council? This public hearing is now closed. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Swenson, second by Councilman Suggs, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Public hearing number three, consider use of permit request to operate a tattoo parlor. Ms. Elizabeth Blot.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is a special use permit for a tattoo parlor from James Brandon Corey. Just a reminder that this request requires council to operate in a quasi-judicial capacity based on evidence and factual materials. Speakers must be sworn in before speaking. Staff received a request from James Brandon Corey to operate a tattoo parlor at 311 North Queen Street. The property is further identified as parcel number 26304 and owned by Demetrius and Dorothy Mills, I'm sorry, Mills, excuse me. This is an area of the existing property. Currently, the property houses a 2,180 square foot building with approximately 20 feet of frontage along North Queen. The property is Zon B2, which is Business District. A special use permit is required for a tattoo slash body piercing parlor in a B2 zoning district. The surrounding zoning is all of B2. To the north, the adjacent land use is a vacant commercial building. To the south, Chamber of Commerce. To the east, a parking lot and commercial buildings. And the west, clinical offices and a parking lot. The property is located within the downtown mixed-use future land use sector. The proposed use is in compliance with the city's comprehensive land use, which recommends community and social activity for the designated area. This is a front view of the property. In 2022, Mr. Corey submitted a text amendment to remove the separation requirement between a tattoo parlor and places of worship in B2, as the ordinance had been changed to prohibit any additional churches on Queen Street. The amendment was adopted on October 18, 2022. The planning board recommended approval at their regular scheduled meeting last month. Included in your package are the supplemental regulations for a tattoo parlor, as well as the special use permit criteria. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anything from the council? Hear none. At this time, we're going to a public hearing for consider a special permit request to operate a tattoo parlor. Is there anybody to speak in favor of or opposition of? You have to be sworn in.
Good evening. My name is James Corey, I reside at 1601 Green Hanes Road out in the county. Just in front of y'all tonight, just to let everyone know, we are actually, we've been operating for a couple of years here inside the city. We've been down at 111 North Queen Street. Currently, that building is up for sale. As you've heard tonight, whenever our taxes spiked, everybody in the city decided it was a good time to sell property. We've relocated here, we have the building owner here with us here tonight. I think where we're at, we've got a little bit of longevity, and we're just asking for
All right, thank you. Would there be any elders to speak in favor of or opposition of? Would there be any others to speak in favor of or opposition of? I hear none, this public hearing is now closed. Anything from the council? Entertaining motion? Motion was made by Councilman Swenson, second by...
Does this need to be consistent with the land use plan and all that? It's just a special use permit? No. To add the, click like, state the motion in full for this permit? Not for this one, okay.
Okay. It was seconded by Councilman Suggs, all in favor, say aye. Action agenda, item number one. FYI, 2024-25 quarter budget statistics. Ms. Donna Goodson, information only. So we're going to have to take a vote on this, information only.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In your packet is an interim financial summary, which reflects the estimates of 12 months or 100% of the 2425 fiscal year. It does not include all of the final year-end accruals, which we are in the process of making now. It does represent activity from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Combining all the funds, the city received 105,216, 105,216,000 dollars in revenues and expended approximately 99.4 million dollars. Internal service funds have not been included. The general fund itself derived 76% of its revenues from three major sources, which were property taxes at 44%, local government sales tax at 22%, and state shared revenue and franchise taxes of 10%. The city's overall expenses, both personnel and non-labor, show spending at an average of 89%, which is proportional to previous years. Attached, you have a summary of the revenue and expenditure totals for the major operating funds and a chart comparing the actual revenues and expenditures from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '24. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Entertaining from the council?
For our tax, or, well, when the lady was here talking about the 60 cent rate, what would that look like for us? We've already set our budget, and we've already did that, but I'm just curious of that.
60 cent, 60 cent would have been 12 million, 12 million 60,000 dollars approximately, about an 862,000 dollar increase.
We talked about this during budget season, and even with us doing a decrease, going down 4 cent now, hate to be the bearer of bad news or ask the bad questions, but the city, if we continue to decline our tax rate, eventually, we're going to have to raise taxes to overcome that shortfall from decreasing the tax rate, correct?
In order to provide the same services with rising costs, rising costs, we would say yes, unless we would go into appropriated fund balance, which we have done in the past. I believe 2020 was the last year that we actually had, we actually went into appropriated fund balance to balance the budget.
But to balance our budget, we cannot sustain going into our fund balance, we have to keep a certain threshold for the LGC. If we have a devastating storm that comes through and tears up the city like Katrina and everything else, and FEMA not coming to our aid, as the president has said before, we would deplete our funds and be pretty much broke, correct?
Yes, sir. The LGC recommends that we provide, we have an 8% fund balance, which is, which 8% relates to the expenditures in, of how much it would take. 8% means you need to have enough in fund balance to operate one month without any additional revenues. That's what 8, that's what the 8% identifies.
And when we normally have storms of the magnitudes that we've had in the past, and looking to get money back from FEMA has taken us quite some time, correct?
Yes, we're just now, we just closed Hurricane Matthew project. So yes, it takes several years, because some of the, some of the expenses that we have, some of the, some of the damage that we have, takes years to rebuild, because it's structural, it's within our infrastructure. And it just takes a lot of time, and we do have to front the money beforehand, and we're not guaranteed any, we're not guaranteed any reimbursement back from FEMA. Perfect example, we did have some damage with the last tropical storm and one of the last hurricanes, and the governor did not declare a state of emergency, therefore, we were not eligible to even apply for FEMA aid. So those types of expenses and those types of repairs have to come out of our fund balances of those particular funds where the damages do occur.
Anything from the council?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked the question. So I find myself, as I'm quite sure my colleagues do as well, even having struggles, when we listen to how the increased property taxes are impacting the citizens. And, you know, of course, I go back to during the planning, budget planning season, when I asked, you know, what would the 60, the 63% tax rate, you know, look like? And so I can't help but, but just go back to the fact that, and I can speak for myself personally, and I've, and I've had conversations with some of you, that the decision to reduce our tax rate to 73% was because we were informed that the average increase that homeowners would see would be about $400. And unfortunately, you know, outside of, you know, individuals that are coming here and sharing, you know, and having conversations with, with others that are out there, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, like, I'm trying to figure out, what do we do? And I, and it, and I don't want to feel that we're in a place now that there's nothing that we can do, but there's a, there's a reality that there are so many unknowns of what is going to happen nationally, right? You know, we're, we're dealing with inflation, but when the decision was made, my decision was based on the fact of that average of, of $400. Like, I know no one of us could have imagined the impact of this, of this decision, but it's a real decision, and so when we think about, like, you know, you've got, and I think it was mentioned today, like, you've got elders who aren't able to get their monies, you know, their medication. You know, we look at, you know, the federal government being shut down right now, and like, there are things that we don't even know are coming. So my question is, because, you know, I'm, I'm one to want to ask, well, not to want to ask the question, but I ask the question, like, is it a consideration for anyone else for us to do anything about this, the tax rate that we have, that we adopted? And that's why, you know, I thank you, you know, I'm saying, for asking, you know, those questions, but it's, it's just a real concern, because, like, we've always moved as a council of hearing the, you know, when we hear the people. And I know it's like, well, the decision has been made now, but there is a reality, you know, I didn't, I didn't know the date, but you gave the date, I think you gave the date, you know, by January, in which something can be amended. My question is, is there anything that we can do to at least reduce a measure of the impact that our citizens are seeing?
I'm happy to go to the next agenda item.
Before you do that...
She had, her next item is just about property tax, if you want to dig into that.
It was important for me to say that before she moves into the next leg of her presentation, and also in consideration of what Councilman Swenson just shared.
Does anyone have any other questions about the 2425?
Ms. Goodson, I really want to make... Ms. Goodson, I really want to make, ask us, make a statement. From my understanding, when we went through COVID, we had all this money coming in from different resources we had coming in. And now that COVID is over, those resources aren't available anymore.
Correct.
And, and I think, and I'm, I'm just speaking from my own heart. I'm thinking when COVID came and we were getting all these benefits, everybody was happy and, you know, we living the good life. And anytime you live in this world that I live in, you're gonna have some good times, you're gonna have some bad times. And I feel like the whole time I sit on this council during COVID, I kept saying, don't think because you're getting money now, it's gonna last forever. Because life just don't work like that. The government don't work like that. I served in the government for thirty-one years. It doesn't work like that, that you pay your a hundred dollars and take back ninety-nine. But that's just the reality of government. And I, and I try to tell people, don't go out, keep buying all these TVs and all this other expensive stuff now because you're gonna reap what you sow later. And, and I'm not saying it in reference to property taxes, but in reference to anything, you can't buy a car seven years ago or eight years ago and pay the same price today. Inflation is, is hitting the world like crazy. And it affects us as a city with gas, water, sewer. All this stuff is going up. And I know I'm a tight bear too. I hate paying taxes just like everybody else. But where are the resources going to come from that now we're not getting all this money from these other resources that we were giving them during COVID? But we have to come to a reality that, you know, we're not trying to punish anybody. My mother's eighty-six years old. She got to pay up property taxes just like everybody else. Her taxes went from seventeen to fifty-six dollars. She called me like she was getting ready, somebody was breaking in now to kill her. They tell me their property taxes went up. And I tried to explain to her like I tried to explain to other people. You know, it's, we, we have to do what we have to do to try to make it right. And I agree with Ms. Solomon. If we, if we, if they, some, some resource or something that we could dig into that we're not going to see the city go broke, like I'm hearing these other cities around North Carolina going in all this debt and they having to raise taxes a whole lot higher than we are. But I just wanted to make that statement. I think Ms. Suss, he has something to say. All right, thank you. You can move on.
Thank you, sir. So we're through with the twenty-four, twenty-five fourth quarter. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The next.
Item number two. FY twenty-five, twenty-six request for information regarding additional property tax revenue. Ms. Donald Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to get a little bit of history. You're correct, we did receive a little over six million dollars in ARPA funds. The city was very intentional in not using, not using those funds for operating expenses. We painstakingly went through every department and looked at their, their requests mainly for capital improvements. The biggest one being sewer improvements for Vernon Avenue, which we would never have been able to do without borrowing money if we had not been for the ARPA funds. So we are, we're extremely grateful for those funding, for the funding that we did do. But we did not intentionally use those funds for general operating funds. As my understanding, some municipalities did. Some of them used their funding to, for salary increases. And when the money gives away, then they're going to have to come up with a way of continuing on with those salary increases. So I think we, I think the city did a very good and responsible job. The council did a very good and responsible job in looking at how the best use that, those monies to further some things that we had not been able to do for a while within the city.
One-time expenses, so that we did not build our need for future budgets.
Yes, what it, what it, um, one of the main things it did was the sewer improvements on Vernon Avenue, but it did allow us to buy rolling stock for a year and not have to go into debt and get a rolling stock loan, which we do that every other year, but we also, it takes five years to buy, to pay that off. So we were able to extend our rolling stock a little bit down the road for much-needed vehicles. Another little bit of history, just, just so you can, so we can look at it respective of everything. The last time we had a property valuation was in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. That was from two, that was a property valuation back to two thousand and nine and we actually lost ten million dollars in real property evaluations at that time. And at that time, the revenue neutral rate that was calculated was point seven five cents, point seventy-five cents per hundred. We elected to keep it at, at seventy cent, the, the rate that we had already established. So we made, we made a concerned effort back in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen to not do the revenue neutral rate at seventy-five. So just to give you a little bit of background, a little bit of history. So this year we have gone, and then it was at seventy, seventy cents for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. In twenty twenty, we went to seventy-three. And we had that for two years, but we started dipping into appropriated fund balance. And so back in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, we increased the rate to seventy-seven cents. And it's been seventy-seven cents until this coming year at seven, where we have reduced it down to seventy-three cents. So just to give you a little bit of history of where we are and what, and how we struggle every year and, but especially when we get closer to that eight-year where we, where we're not getting a lot of property increases, but yet our, our prices keep continuing to grow. So just a little bit of history on our property valuations. The city council had received several requests to clarify how the additional property tax revenue budgeted in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget was to be appropriated within the general fund. I want everyone to understand that this is just general fund revenues we're talking about. As a point of clarity, we're not talking about the three-point-eight million that Steve Miller may have, may have, may have mentioned because that is, that is utilities and that's specifically electric. So we're looking at a three-point-four million increase in property tax revenue. The city of Kinston's twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six operating budget for the general fund included an additional three-point-four million dollars in property tax revenue due to an eight-year evaluation of property values and a zero-point-four, point zero-four decrease in the abitorm tax rate. The manager recommended budget was made available for viewing in May and then presented at a public hearing on June third and the resulting adopted budget was approved on June seventeenth. The organizations within the general fund included increases in appropriations in effort to achieve the goals of hiring and retaining qualified employees to improve turnover and provide much-needed services to the citizens of Kinston to include police and fire safety. Just for a point of clarity, our general operating budget of thirty-three point eight million dollars, fifty-eight percent of that budget is for salaries. That is our most important asset in the general fund. And I would have to say probably our most important asset, any of our other funds are the people who serve this city and serve it with great pride. And we, we struggle with keeping qualified, educated individuals within these walls because they are so good that we are losing them to other, other surrounding counties and municipalities and even, even private industry. Because we do train them and we do train them well and they do do a good job for us. But unfortunately, we've not been able to, to make, to retain them. Because it's not in our, believe it or not, it's not in our budget for someone to come to us and say, I've just been offered a job and they've offered me twenty thousand more dollars a year. I don't have it in my budget to say, okay, I can match that because I've already set that budget for that year. So it's extremely hard to maintain and keep quality people without making their, their salaries competitive. Anyway. Also, the budget was also utilized to support the strategic planning goals of the city council to include commitment to public safety, building a vibrant, healthy community, strategic transportation and utility infrastructure investment, nurturing community relationships and proactive citizen communication, and improving the operational and financial strength of the city of Kinston. Specifically, in your packet and also online, there is a list of all, of the additional appropriations that we, that the adopted budget included. I'm not going to list them each individually unless you certainly request me to. I will give a synopsis of it. Up to three-point-four million dollars. One point one million was utilized for a five percent COLA for all existing full-time employees and the corresponding increases in social security taxes for those salary increases. Increase in retirement, not only due to the COLA, but for state maintained, state mandated rate increases that we have to, we have, they set it for us and we have to pay it. A seventy thousand dollar increase in employer portion of group health insurance. And that's in order to maintain a sufficient health, self-help insurance fund. Also of that in the money, we had three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars where we made one of our part-time employees a full-time position and we added two police positions back that had been unfunded in prior years due to budget constraints. And also we added to, back two firefighter positions that we, that we have had to not fund in the past. And this was necessary to improve the city's ability to meet the National Fire Protection Association staffing requirements. This budget also includes four hundred thousand dollars of additional contribution to the general fund capital reserve fund for the hopes for future infrastructure projects such as roads and streetscapes. The infrastructure in the city is very old and it's very costly to go in there and improve it. So what we're hoping to do is take some of this additional funding and, and build up the general fund capital reserves. So when we do get, do we do have these infrastructure repairs and improvements that we can make, we can do it without having to borrow money to do it. Also, some one-time expenditures such as a new phone system. We're having to get a new phone system because of the current system going out of business and no longer supporting the phone system and also to allow phone service when the internet is down. We're also looking at a pay-in classification study. We're looking at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand in upgrades for five traffic cabinets and also an upgrade to the Southview Cemetery. We also have numerous parks and recreation improvements not able to be funded in prior years due to budget constraints to the tune of almost four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And we're also seeing an increase of sixty-eight thousand dollars in animal control with Lenore County to allow for the purchase of a new vehicle since they provide the animal control services now for the city residents. There is a corresponding forty-nine thousand dollars increase in property tax collection fees that we have to pay to the Lenore County for when, that's our fee for them to maintain and manage the property taxes that they collect for us. We have a seventy-six thousand dollar additional support for the library to include the cost of half of a boiler replacement and half of an HVAC replacement. We have a contract that we share with the county on that building. We also have sixty-three thousand dollars in new economic development incentives. This also includes almost twelve thousand dollar increase in the annual auditing fees that we have due to the additional compliance testing of federal and state grants to ensure the city of Kinston is following federal and state funding agreements. So contrary to popular belief, we do get an independent audit every single year and it is costly. It's between eighty and ninety thousand dollars a year. And believe me, they ask us a lot of questions. They come in for two weeks and then we're still, they're still asking for information after that. So it's a very detailed audit. And I'm proud to say that we have gotten, we have no opinions on the audits. I know, which means it's, they didn't find, they did not find anything material. We also have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars increase in the cost of shared services that are provided to the general fund by some of our other funds. In addition, we're still trying to improve our general fund fund balance. So we're budgeted almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars added back to the fund balance to maintain a healthy fund balance in the event of disasters and other unforeseen expenses. So in answer to your question about the tax rate, I cannot speak for the county, but my guess is the tax bills have already gone out. There will not be a change in the tax rate this year. So, I mean, they talk, you, you can, you can propose a budget amendment, but you, you will not propose a budget amendment to decrease the revenue for property taxes because it's already been billed and we will receive that money.
Mr. Turner, would you like to intervene on that?
Well, there are, there are some statutes that address that idea that I'll be glad to speak to if you want me to.
Yes.
There, there is a statute that addresses amendments to a budget ordinance. And, and you start with the general rule. You start with the general rule, which is no amendment may increase or reduce a property tax levy in any manner or in any manner alter a property taxpayer's liability unless the board is ordered to do so by a court of competent jurisdiction or by a state agency having the power to compel the levy of taxes by the board. For example, the state treasurer's office in a municipal takeover. There is a, one caveat to that, which may be the January one date that was mentioned earlier. And, and that provision does allow a change before January one following adoption of the budget if there have been substantially more or less revenues than the amount anticipated when the budget was adopted. So if there are substantially more revenues that come in between the budget adoption and January one, the board could reduce the tax levy. If there are substantially less revenues in that same period of time, there is statutory authority to increase the tax levy. But it has to be based on a, an unanticipated change in the amount of revenues.
I would say as an example would be in case we had another pandemic and we got another eight or ten million dollars of revenue, that's the types of things that you would be able to go back before January one and say, we would like to reduce the property tax rate because we got this unexpected revenue source that we're not going to have to pay back. It's, it's a, it's a absolute revenue source. That would be my interpretation.
And that's where you understand it, Mr. Turner?
Yes, and I can say I've been doing this for almost forty years and I had actually forgotten about the second sentence about the January one date because I've never seen it happen. I have always operated under the, the general rule that you can't change the tax levy once you adopt the budget ordinance. And, and that is largely true, but with that minor exception.
But, yeah, but you can't.
If you have.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just because it's never been done before doesn't mean.
I mean, it can't be.
I just was speaking to how rare it would be.
I'm happy to entertain any questions on the information I just shared.
Anything else on the council?
Ms. Goodson, you, you're going to put this on the website, this information?
It is on the website in the agenda.
Okay.
Yes, it's already there.
Just curious, is the, the county matching any or assisting us with any of the capital outlay improvements and things for our local parks through Parks and Recreation?
No, this does not include any county, any county.
Assistance.
Any county additions. Because I, I left that particular organization out because it is funded from, from, by the county. So these, these that I, these that I named or that are on here are just for the program parks and programs that we have, not including any county expenditures that we may have. And I don't believe there are any capital improvements in the county. Yep.
If there were, Scott, they handle those separately outside your county budget that you manage.
Yeah, we take those directly to, straight to the county.
Anything else on the council?
I want to thank you, Ms. Goodson, for, again, reiterating the way this, we came to this point with the property tax rate decrease, although the bills for some people, for many people in our community have increased. I'm very glad that we were able to articulate and share where exactly this money is going towards. Because even with, you know, all the rising costs in the world and all the things getting more and more expensive, I have not seen anyone come to the podium or any conversations I've had one-on-one where anyone said, well, this is what we need to cut. This is the service I want less of. This is the thing I want the city to do less of. This is the thing I want the city to do less of. It's, it's really about more. People want to see better roads, better infrastructure, better and improved services and those things cost. So we have to figure out how do we pay for those things without putting such an undue burden on our citizens. But the things still got to get bought. They still got to get paid for. So, and I appreciate you emphasizing so greatly the, the need for us to invest in our city personnel, the need for us to be able to maintain a high-quality workforce here. There has been a lot of conversation I've heard from some of the complaints about the tax rate increase when mentioning that, that people talk about the salaries of city staff members, everything from our environmental services and parks and workers to our city manager and department heads. I've heard salaries get brought up. And I don't know where people or if people are actually comparing what the salaries are here at the city of Kinston to peer communities across the state. We're not paying any type of exorbitant salaries here when you compare us to other communities. In fact, the majority, the staff who do leave the city of Kinston typically go and work at another nearby community because they're making more money. So we have to be able to do what we can to invest in our workforce so that we can maintain a high-quality workforce. And I will tell y'all, the people who work for the city of Kinston, they love the city of Kinston. I've had so many great experiences and relationships my entire life, you know? I, I come from a city employee family. So I, these are people I've seen and have worked with and interacted with my entire life and they love this work. They love this job. They love the culture and the community we've been here and we've built here. And they can go anywhere. They can go to the private sector. They can go work at one of the companies here. They can go work at another city and make more money. But they decided to invest in the community that they care about. And so I think it's important that we make decisions to invest in them. And I, I think it's important that our citizens see the value in us investing in and retaining a high-quality workforce. So I'm very grateful we were able to provide some type of cost of living adjustment to their salaries this year, which still, when in the grand scheme of things, someone alluded to it, is incremental in the grand scheme of things, but it's something and I want us to work towards even doing more. And at this point, we've realized there is no way to adjust the property tax rate. It's been adopted, the budget's been adopted, the bills have been out. We can't adjust it unless, as statute says, we get some unexpected windfall of money. So if, if, if somebody wants to play the, what's tonight? Mega Millions Night? If somebody wants to play the Mega Millions and we get some millions of dollars in funding to come into the city, make a donation to the city of Kinston and, and that would be an allowable reason for us to then alter the tax rate. But otherwise, we've, we've calculated the expenses that we're going to have for the next year. And we unfortunately have to figure out ways to, to, to meet the bills and pay the bills. I'm myself figuring out how I can pay my tax bill this year. What I do want to appreciate and share some appreciation for is Mr. Stephen Marlowe. I believe that was his name. That was the public comment that was submitted online. If y'all heard Ms. Debra read that earlier. He suggested that the city and I guess the city and the county explore pushing back the interest-bearing, the limit after January 1 when property tax bills are due, if we give our citizens some wiggle room and not enforcing that, that interest on their, their, their bill if they are late paying the, paying the bill. That's something. Those are the types of conversations I want us to have and explore because at this point the bills are going out, we can't change that. But we can say, can we give our citizens a little bit more time? Would that, can we make some calculations? Would that put an undue burden on our community? Those are possible solutions. Other things are if we want to explore with the county some type of additional property tax relief we can offer for eligible communities. I know here in North Carolina, there is a state program people can apply, or there's a state statute that requires that cities and counties offer some relief for veterans and elderly and disabled people. We can look at and see if it's statutory, statutorily allowable for us to offer even more relief to people who meet certain thresholds. Like those are the conversations that I would love for this body to have that we have not had and that I haven't necessarily heard from the community yet. So we've just got to put our thinking caps on. We've got to put our dreaming caps on and figure out what we can do. But I do just want to reiterate that state law does prohibit us from making so many changes or really any change now unless we get some big windfall of money. The last thing, when we talk about property tax rate and values going up and things like that, we as a body, we as a community, the private and public sector, need to do more trying to improve our tax base. Because we realize we're working with what we're working with. We're trying to make the most of it. But the other communities around us that people say, oh, they had a rate decrease this year, they're getting all these new services, they're making all these upgrades, that's really because they're building a lot of homes in those communities. You're seeing a lot of people, a lot of communities get extra municipal revenue because people are applying for building permits and zoning permits and all this stuff. So that's extra money coming into the city's coffre. But also new homes being built and property values being increased because of that, that's improving the city's tax base. We have had some development in the last few years in Kinston that we've approved and we've worked with as accounts. I'm really proud and excited about those things that are in the works. But we need to figure out some ideas and plans on how we can do even more. Because if a city ain't growing, it's dying. And so we need to do what we can as a council to encourage more growth so then we have a stronger tax base, we get additional revenues in from new residents coming in or increased values because of improvements in homes and buildings in our downtown and our neighborhoods. And then we can lower the tax rate even more because there's more value in the community. There's an increased tax base. Those are also conversations that as a council we have not had enough of. There's some conversations starting to happen now with the UNC School of Government about how we can increase housing inventory here in Kinston. But we've got to think really hard about how we can get more people living here in town and improving the quality of life for the people who do live here and choose to live here. One thing, I'll just give a shout out to our planning department this year. One of the things included in the operating expenses for the budget this year is an update to our comprehensive land use plan. So when we start thinking about how land is developed in the city of Kinston and what our planning department does and how we think long-term about where things get added and built in Kinston, those are conversations we need to be having in alignment with how we can work with developers in the private sector to attract, attract new people to come and build homes here, attract new commercial enterprise here in certain areas to really build up our tax base. So I won't be around for those conversations unfortunately, but that's what the council and the community needs to be thinking about. As we're making these adjustments, as we have these higher bills, how can we also increase our tax base so that we can get some relief down the line? Because at this point, these are conversations that unfortunately should have been had months ago that aren't being had now. So the budget is set and we've got to think long-term about how we can move the city forward. And we've got to dream long-term. There's a Toni Morrison quote, if any of you are familiar with her, where she says something about when you've been entrusted with the power, dream before you think. And so let's dream, let's use our imagination, think creatively about how we can get some new revenue sources for the city of Kinston and then put our thinking caps on and how we can actually make it possible and make it happen.
Thank you, Councilman Suggs. Anything else from the council? Mr. Turner, I did have one question. There have been some conversations with, with the county about the eight-year tenure for property tax evaluation. Is there anything that you know of legally that, that we can have those conversations with the county, maybe do tax appraisals four years or three years instead of waiting eight years and then it build up so high and you had to pay it one time?
Yeah, eight, eight years creates a lot of sticker shock, but eight years is the maximum. They can do it more often than eight years. And a number of counties are going to more often revaluations for that reason. Because in, in the, in the recent economy, market values of properties have been increasing, but the, the county doesn't catch up, doesn't keep up with that, with eight-year evaluations.
All right, thank you. All right, item number four, consider approval of purchase of a, no, wait a minute. All right, I'm sorry, I'm moving too fast. Item number three, consider 2526 operating budget amendment, Ms. Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. It's been a long night, I know. You're trying to speed it up. So I'll go as fast as I can. In your packet is ordinance or to amend the annual operating budget. All of the amendments that are listed and it's on the, in your packet and also online, they affect the general fund. The main, the biggest one is an amendment for approximately $380,000 to repair one of the fire trucks or the main, our main ladder truck, is that correct? The main ladder truck that was damaged with lightning. And so right now, we have, we have received insurance proceeds of approximately $380 million and we're asking to allocate that to the fire and rescue fleet maintenance budget. The other ones are some PR rollover corrections and a reallocation of maintenance and repair, repair supplies to the, for the county recreation.
And it was 380,000?
Yes, 380,000.
That's what I was going.
I'm sorry. Well, it may be, you never, I mean, jury's out. We're expected to receive additional insurance proceeds, but we don't know at this time. And once we do have that number, we'll come back with another budget amendment. Because what I try to tell every department, even though you might get the money and tell you, I gave you permission to spend the money, you can't spend it because we have to add it to one of your line items. So. Any que, any other questions? I'm sorry.
Anything further from the council? All right, entertain the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Swenson, second by Councilman Suggs. All in favor say aye. And opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, item number, number four, consider approval of purchase of the new Gap V8 MC-1510 3S 3 times 2 jet vac truck through Source Wheel Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 101221-GPV at a cost of $651,209.70 plus tags and tax for a total cost of $653,215.70. Steve Miller.
I'm not sure if I need to add anything after all that. Yeah, the current budget, we did appropriate $657,006 for the replacement of vehicle number 3035. It is a 2017 jet vacuum truck. These are the trucks that our sewer division uses to clean sewer pipes, prevent blockages, clear grease out, debris, so we don't have sewer overflows from our manholes. That also can be used for emptying out vaults, storage tanks, septic tanks, things like that as well. The Water Operations Division actually has two of these vehicles. This is the older of the two that we have. And the stormwater section operates one's vehicle of the same type. They use that for the stormwater system, do the same type of work. If this purchase is approved, the current vehicle, the 2017 model, will get transferred to the stormwater division to replace a 2007 model vehicle that they actually have. So we do this so that we can use newer equipment with less maintenance costs in stormwater as well as in sewer. And it prevents us from having to get debt service for $600,000 vehicles in our stormwater system. They, they simply use the hand-me-down vehicles and they will give their older model back to Water Operations so they can sell it and get the salvage value. The vehicle, as Mayor Protim already so eloquently put, was a Gap Vax bottle. I won't even say all the W's, they're already out there. It's available for purchase from Aquip LLC through the North Carolina Source Wheel Cooperative Purchasing Contract, which is one of the contracts that we participate in that meets our purchasing requirements. The cost of the purchase, as, as he said, is $651,209.70. Delivery of the vehicle is expected to take eight to nine months, which will put us at the end of the fiscal year, which is why we are also asking to include the tax and title fees in the purchase order in case it has to get rolled over to next fiscal year and we would have those funds that we could pull back out and pay those fees for, after July 1st if it's that way. So at this point, I recommend city council consider approval of the purchase of this jet vac truck from Aquip LLC for the cost of $651,209.70 plus the tag and fees for a total cost of $653,215.70. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for the council?
Steve, do they normally charge a delivery fee for bringing equipment to us at this magnitude of price?
Not typically. I think I get enough money.
Any other questions from the council? If not, entertain the motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Seeford. Second by Councilman Swenson. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, consider approval of special events permit request for Bradfest 2025. Chief Gouet.
Good evening. This is the third annual event for Bradfest. It's going to take place the same exact day, actually directly after the half marathon. Every police officer that's not working patrol that day and night will be working that particular marathon. When that's over with, Bradfest will start. They've agreed to hire two police officers at their expense. It's going to take place at Pearson Park as it has the past two years. It's going to be Saturday, October 18th, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. There is a small road closure, it's that little bend in there on Mitchell Street between Gordon and North Street. That'll be closed. EMS will be called if needed. There will be alcohol at the event. They're going to work under Mother Earth's ABC permit. It is attached inside the special event package. The hold homeless agreement has been signed and the city of Kinston is the insurance certificate holder. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Any questions for the council? Mr. Turner, you like to intervene?
Everything appears to be in order.
Very well. I request a motion. Motion. Motion made by Councilman Swenson, second by Councilman Suggs. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Item number six, consider approval of special events permit request for Kinston First Presbyterian, Pentecostal, I'm sorry, holding this church fall festival. Chief Gouet.
Yes, sir. This has been going on since I've been working in this city. I actually used to bring my kids there when they were kids. This is going to be Saturday, October 25th, from 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM at First PH. It's a fall festival. They will not have alcohol there. EMS and law enforcement will be called if needed. We'll, we'll do small foot patrols in that particular area. They're going to be giving away small foods such as hot dogs, chips and drinks. There is a small little road closure like it has been in the past. The hold homeless agreement has been signed and the city of Kinston is listed as the insurance certificate holder. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Anything from the council? Entertain the motion. Motion by Councilman Swenson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Suggs. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, consider resolution to authorizing the sale of real property 1011 Macon Street. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a, a resolution that would authorize the conveyance of the property at 1011 Macon Street. It was, an offer to buy was submitted for $1,000. It is .15, .15 acres that the, that the city has owned since 1999. So 26 years. The potential buyer indicates that she would like to build a tiny house there. I guess that's a matter between her and the planning department, but I did inquire of her intentions and that's what she said she would like to do. The tax value on this property is $6,323. There were no competing bids when it was advertised. It's ready for your consideration.
Anything from the council? Anything from the planning office? All right, entertain the motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Seeford.
Second.
Second by Councilman Suggs. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, sit and manage.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I've got a couple of items tonight, but we'll run through them quickly. I'm going to let Leon go first for the scheduled item, which is the Christmas update, including a Pearson Park lighting ceremony.
Good evening, everybody. As you all
As you all know, we've got Christmas coming up. It's already quite busy in our office with that. Uh, the first event has, well, actually we have two events coming up. Uh, they are community events. They're free to everyone. Everyone's welcome to come and we hope that you do because we want to celebrate the holidays together. We are a community and that's what we, while we have these events, Scott DK, which is, is this the wrong one? It's not, okay. Thank you. So the first one is in November. It's our annual Turn on the Holidays event. It takes place in Pearson Park at 6 o'clock that Saturday, November 22nd, that, which is the Saturday before Thanksgiving. Just reminding everybody again, I know I've announced it before, but this is an event where we have music and we have Santa Claus and we have lots and lots of families there. It's a real family, uh, event and Santa Claus comes into the park, the kids scream and holler and count, do the countdown with Santa Claus and everything lights up downtown. It's really fun and, uh, exciting. Uh, so bring the kids, take your pictures with Santa Claus afterwards. Santa Claus will have his helper again this year. Um, they were really happy to be here last year and wanted to come back and do it again, so we let them do it. Okay. Tinsel Trail, as you know, in the past, uh, was an opportunity where merchants could support, um, the, uh, put their own, uh, lighted decorations in the park, uh, to create a more immersive lighting experience downtown and that, that was good. Christmas is an economic development opportunity for us, has, uh, has been, um, pretty much successful. Geo fencing, as I've mentioned before, has indicated that we've had as many as five people come downtown to see the lights, uh, during the six weeks that, uh, the park and the lights are on, uh, throughout downtown. Um, this year, the Tinsel Trail has been reimagined as Christmas Card Lane. We are doing, uh, 30, we're hoping to get 30. We're at 2021 right now already and we just really started this week, uh, two ago. Uh, so there's, they're six foot tall Christmas cards. They're three feet wide. They're printed on, uh, vinyl, uh, from, uh, right on signs is doing it for us. Uh, we're constructing in my garage, basically, the wood frames for, to attach them to. There will be lights around the outside of them. Uh, they will be anchored to the ground. Uh, last year, we tried it out with, uh, a much larger version of that, uh, and it was, uh, not disturbed. So if anybody is interested in promoting their business, this is all we need from you is your check for $300 for these, their, uh, six weeks of advertising out there and your logo. We take care of the rest of it. You have absolutely nothing to do at all, at all. We put it up, take it down, have it printed, reassembled, disassembled, stored, all that sort of stuff, which is, uh, has been a big selling point for these. Uh, they're, again, they're lit from November 22nd to December 31st and, uh, it's, it's, um, going to be a really nice experience. I think this year, a lot of people are, are very excited about it. Uh, so we want, also want to thank all of our area businesses that are participating, uh, with our design committee, uh, and our design committee, uh, for bringing the vis- this vision to life, which just came basically as a, um, um, an experiment last year and then sort of forgot about it till recently and, and, uh, it's, we just sparked it right up and lit it on fire. Uh, and it's been very good. Proceeds support, the proceeds from this Christmas Card Lane, um, which is what we're calling it, uh, help offset the cost for the redesign of the All American City Park, which is, uh, an expensive endeavor on, undertaking by, uh, Downtown Kinston Revitalization. That and the oil painting that we're auctioning off, which you all need to bid on. Okay. So save the date. Again, um, the second date, December 6th, the Christmas Parade. Uh, since the Christmas Parade has been, uh, reinvented, so to speak, and expanded and live streamed across the state and s- all the states in the world, actually, for that matter. Um, it's, it's grown, it's become very popular. It's one of the, the biggest parades around this area and we're, we're very happy about that. I mean, we should be because we are the, the county seat, right? So we kind of have to be the leaders, I guess, of, of setting the bar. Um, but, uh, that starts at 5:30 PM. It departs from Granger Stadium that evening and, uh, goes down, for those of you who are always asking about the parade route, it goes from Granger Stadium down Granger Avenue to Queen Street and then down Queen Street to Caswell and left to McLeWain. And then that's the end of it. It's about two and a, two, two miles, just over two miles. Please, uh, go online and register. Uh, we've gotten a few registrations already. It's live at downtownkinston.com. Uh, the fee is still $50. Um, now, these fees support our annual Christmas events and make those possible. Now, it's all about the lights, so if you're going to be in the parade, light it up. Light up your car, light up your costume, light your bikes up, um, just cover it in lights. It's all about the, the lights at night and the fantasy for that. Uh, the, it will be live streamed again this year courtesy of News News, uh, who's been a very good partner for us, uh, in marketing Kinston and all of our events and, uh, downtown. And also be sure when you're registering, please read the entire application. There are rules and regulations that we are required to follow, therefore we pass that on to you. You are therefore required to follow it. You cannot hand out or throw anything at all to the crowd. Nada, nothing. And also by the same token, please don't encourage people to come to your vehicle to get it, whatever it is. They should remain on the sidewalk. So everybody out there, remember, this is an evening parade. We want everyone to be safe. We don't want anybody injured in any way. Please, if you're viewing the parade, remain on the sidewalk, give the parade the room it needs to, uh, pass through and maneuver around corners and that sort of thing. Please be mindful of yourselves and your children and those around you. So these events are our gift to you, our community, and we are grateful for all the support we get from everyone, uh, that helps make them happen, uh, right down to the volunteers who come out and devote their time to us, uh, for whatever length of time they have, uh, whether it's in the park, because we're setting up things this month with the Christmas tree, for example, uh, to check the lights and fluff the limbs, or helping us, uh, manage the parade, parade day. But as always, we welcome volunteers who love Kinston as much as we do and you're always welcome to be part of our projects and our organization because what else? Our city belongs to all of us and we can do, we need to own it, right? It does. So with that, that's the last slide for that. Thanks for saving the best for last always.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'm going to ask Mr. Steve Miller, we've got an event this Saturday, want to update the crowd on, um, you know, we've talked a lot about cleaning up the neighborhoods and this plays right into that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Saturday, October 11th will be our annual Kinston Public Services Fall Cleanup. Uh, the official event will be 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the New Sway Nature Center. Uh, we will have refreshments there, we'll have bags, grabbers, gloves, vests, everything you need to be safe and be able to help make our community look better. Um, you're encouraged, you can clean up any place you want to. A lot of people like to walk away from there and do different areas right around the park, but you can go to any part of the city and clean up. If you have a large group and you want to clean up your own neighborhood or area, uh, just contact us and let us know and our coordinator will make sure they get you the materials you need to be able to clean up the areas you want to do. So if you've seen areas that you're tired of looking at and you want to make them look better, here's your chance to do it and we'll help make sure we get everything picked up when you're done. Uh, if you do have a group or you do want more information, uh, you can call our information resource person, which is Beth Lofton, at 252-939-3283. Or you can still call our general customer service number, 939-3282, and they will get you in touch with her as well. So we look forward to anybody who wants to come out. Uh, we do have a lot of groups come out, uh, if you have a group, uh, or you need to get, uh, community service hours for your school or whatever, uh, we do certificates for that as well, so we'll be glad to help with that. So we look forward to seeing everybody out. That's Saturday, the 11th.
What time is it?
Nine to 12.
9:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, my last item, in keeping with the, uh, council's efforts to respond to citizens' comments and other comment we've heard, uh, from time to time is, hey, the city needs to have an outside audit. And I think there's a huge misunderstanding. For those who are not aware, the North Carolina General Statutes require every city and every county in North Carolina to have an annual audit of their financial statements. That's every year. The local government commission provides a list of approved auditors, so you can't just get anybody qualified to perform these audits. The City of Kinston has and will always comply with the statute. We spend approximately $90,000 a year on the contract with an outside auditing firm that's off the local government's commission's approved list, uh, to conduct our audit. We don't simply turn over the financial statements to them and they go away. We turn them over to them. A team of auditors, I think sometimes eight to 10 in the past, have come. They park in City Hall. We have to give them a location. Um, they go through our financial records, we reserve the working area for them, they stay for a couple of weeks in which they gather information, they ask questions, they interview members of our management and our staff, even myself and the mayor and others. They have the authority to pull random samples of documents, any, nothing's off limits for this group. Uh, they pull purchase orders, invoices, payroll they can. Um, they go thoroughly through the process and look for inconsistencies. For example, if they pull a purchase order and our policy says that you have to, uh, get quotes for that certain process, they look to see if we have them. We also have a very sophisticated financial system that allows our departments, when they get quotes, to enter that into their requisition and it goes through an approval process, which includes their immediate supervisor, their department head, um, the finance director in cases of defects HR, the HR director, and myself. So a lot of folks are looking at those things. Um, staff is called in to answer questions, anybody ha- any of the auditors may have in the process and staff knows. When you're called by the auditors, you respond, that is priority number one, you give them what they need, not just the management staff, but the technical staff as well. So everyone jumps when the auditors come. After their two weeks on site, they return to their offices delving through the financial statements for months, not only for accuracy, but for trends and the overall health of the city's finances. Kinston has received an unmodified opinion in our audits for as far back as I can remember and I've been here a long time, folks. And I hate the words auditors use, like unmodified opinion. You and I would say an excellent audit, wouldn't we? But they say they have those odd terms and it means, they wouldn't change anything is how I sort of interpret, unmodified. These audits, you don't have to take my word for it, they're all on our website. You can delve through them as well at your leisure and you can call our finance director, who is a certified public accountant, who in a different life was one of these auditors that put, put the screws to the cities and the towns. So she knows, she'd be glad to talk to you. I know one of our, uh, speakers tonight sent, uh, Ms. Goodson a long list of questions. Ms. Goodson provided all the responses and offered for her to come in and sit down. Ms. Goodson's glad to do that. We, we love to educate the public on what we do. Um, as Councilmember Suggs said, these folks here, they love Kinston. They could go anywhere else and, and make more money, but they love Kinston. I love Kinston. So I'm really proud of them and the work that they do. We don't say that enough. The last thing, Mayor Pro Tim, and I'll hush up, is a, a lot of talk about our agendas and where can I find this and where can I find that? The clerk prepares the agendas, she delivers it to the council Thursday or Friday, depending on how many items are on it and, and just the time, but when she sends it, after she's delivered it to the council and what she calls her sunshine list, which is the media, she also puts it on our website. And if you go to our main page, there at the bottom, it says Agenda and Minutes. Go in there, you can see the one the council is working on over the weekend, getting ready for their meeting on Tuesday. You see the same material the council gets. You see all their memos, all their backup materials, all the maps. It's all there on Thursday, Friday at the latest, right clerk? And the council's delving through that and you can delve through it at the same time. You can also see old agendas, old material that the council had. You can see minutes. Uh, you can go on our, our Facebook and you see this meeting, I'm not sure how long they're there, um, but we want you to be involved. We're glad that you're here, uh, and we want you to be involved and we want to be as transparent as we can, but we don't know if you don't ask. So I do appreciate those that come and make comments so that we can give you the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything from the council?
Mayor Hard, I, I just want to say, uh, I, I applaud the people that stayed to the very end of the meeting because sometimes you get information that you did not get before, but I did have a question since we have attorney and Ms. Blunt here. Ms. Blunt, is there any way Mr. Frost can tag, uh, that vehicle in that neighborhood? Is the vehicle running? Um, that, the young lady sitting here in the audience has been talking about the church van, can we tag that and have Frost, with Frost to tag it?
Well, our gen- our statute says that a vehicle can be stored on a driveway. That vehicle is on a private driveway. So we have reached out to the pastor ourselves and to No avail has he moved that van. So there is nothing that we can do in our statutes to go on a private property to tag an operating vehicle.
Thank you, ma'am, for that clarity. And then for the, for the attorney.
She's quoting the wrong code. There's two codes to it. There's, there's, uh, van is a church van and it's a commercial. It doesn't fall under the code that she's quoting by. It falls under the second code. Thank you.
Mr. Turner, you like the event on?
Well, Mayor Pro Tim Hard, if, if we could, like, have a meeting about this, like, between the planning director and code enforcement and, um, Ms. Levon?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, if we can have it, just to have a conversation outside of the meeting, just so we don't drag.
Okay.
And, and my second point was, um, the other, the other young lady was talking about 500 Washington Street. If it's private property, we, we can't do anything about that. If the properties are dilapidated and it's blight, we don't want to see it in our community no more than anybody else in our community. However, if it's private property, we cannot make anybody do anything to that private property. We beg and plead and we ask, but we cannot make them do it. And if the city does eminent domain and takes the property, then we got to get the response. Oh, the city took my property and we can't take it for economic development or that. So trust and believe, we don't want to see the blight, we don't want to see dilapidated houses in our community no more than any of our residents do. However, it's private property and we cannot by law make them do anything to those properties. So we are fighting with you, trying to help change the, the, the look of our community just like everybody else. So trust and believe, we really don't want to see it and we wish we could do something different about it.
But it's code, you got state code. If you support, that's correct. You got state code, not the rule, it's state code.
Ma'am, ju- just like Councilman Suggs said, we will have another conversation
With you.
With you about that, okay? So, yeah, it's all right.
Yes, ma'am. All right, anything further from the council? I'm going to move real quick. I, I just want to, um, reach out to some people that's, uh, doing some great things in the city. Uh, the home for the aging, Ms. Betty Griffin, uh, uh, the homeless shelter, Mr. Dunk, uh, Mr., um, Reynolds down at this, Ronald Seaford, he donated 150 fish for experiment for science class, so, and, uh, continue work by Kinston teens and what they're continuing to do in the community. And it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I just want everybody to know that. Uh, I have relatives that died of breast cancer, so just want to put that out. Uh, one thing, uh, Councilman Suggs has, so.
Um, I did want to give a shout out and appreciation to Chief Goyet, Major Jenkins, and the Kinston Police Department for hosting an amazing national night out event last night at Southeast Park. Uh, it was a beautiful turnout, beautiful event. Um, lots of community organizations and agencies supported it, sharing resources and information out there, different city departments. So thank you all for putting that event on for our community each year. Uh, thank you to our PIO, Ms. Sharon, for sharing video footage and stuff out there. Um, I was at work late yesterday and it pushed me, seeing her posting videos of people out there doing the wobble and the cupid shuffle, made me hurry up and get out there. So I'm very grateful that we have a full committed team here at the City of Kinston, uh, ha- putting on positive programs and services, but also spreading the word with our citizens. Uh, and then just also wanted to reiterate the City Services Fair taking place this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at Holloway Community Center. Um, please, please come out. I went to the fair they hosted today at Fairfield Center. Um, all of our city departments there, sharing resources, tools, and tips that- All of our city departments there, sharing resources, tools, and tips that a lot of people might not know about, the energy audit program we talked about in Tella Home, job opportunities in our HR department, all of those things were getting shared today. Major Jenkins from KPD was trying to recruit some of my employees to come work for him. So, you know, we've got opportunities here for the City of Kinston, we've got resources out there, so please come out to that fair on Thursday and take advantage of that information.
Is there anything else from the council? If not, I want to thank the staff for all that they do and keep our mirror in prayers. He's traveling the highways and byways. With that said, I'm going to entertain a motion to go in a closed session for ASICS personnel. Motion was made by Councilman Swenson.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Solomon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.